Thank you, everybody, for being here. I'd like to welcome you to a city council meeting Tuesday, March 5th, 2024. The Salinas City Council Meeting. Spanish translation. This meeting is available in Spanish for members in the public and in attendance on Zoom. Translation devices can be obtained in the foyer. Esta reunión está disponible en español para los miembros del público y en Zoom. Las unidades de transacción, transición se puede obtener en la entrada de la rotanda. Zoom participation. There's a Zoom link for participation. And I would like to start by doing the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Sandoval, can you lead us in the pledge?
Ready. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the great states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, if we can start roll call.
Councilmember Barrera.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilmember McShane. Mayor Protem Orsonio.
Here.
Councilmember Rocha.
Here.
Councilmember Sandoval.
Here.
And Mayor Craig Epson.
And Mayor Craig is at a work-related seminar and will not be in attendance tonight. Also, Councilmember McShane had a personal issue that arose, preventing him from joining us tonight. And if we can start with proclamations. National Red Cross Month, March 2024. And we have Patsy Gasko and Ed Sanchez from the Central Coast Chapter. And if Councilmember Rocha, if you can go ahead and read that proclamation.
I would be very happy to do so. Thank you for being here and for your many years of service to the Red Cross.
Thank you.
I deeply appreciate it. American Red Cross Month, March 2024. Whereas during American Red Cross Month in March, we recognize the compassion of people in Salinas and reaffirm our commitment to care for one another in times of crisis. And whereas this generous spirit is woven into the fabric of our community and that advances the humanitarian legacy of the American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, one of the most honored women in our country's history, who nobly dedicated herself to alleviating suffering. And whereas the contributions of local Red Cross volunteers, over 134 in Monterey County, give hope to the most vulnerable in their darkest hours. And whereas last year in Monterey County, volunteers helped 53 households affected by 39 home fires by addressing their urgent needs like food and lodging, as well as providing recovery support. In addition, they installed 783 smoke alarms, collected 1,560 blood donations, provided first aid and CPR training to 3,243 residents, helped the families of 1,355 students, prepared for disasters through our Pillowcase Project, and assisted 272 families of our armed forces. And whereas we hereby recognize this month of March in honor of all those who lead with their hearts to serve people in need, and we ask everyone to join in this commitment to strengthen our community. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Protem Orlando Orsonio, on behalf of the Salinas City Council, hereby proclaim March 2024 as American Red Cross Month. I encourage the community to reach out and support its humanitarian mission. Thank you.
And if you would, if you could give a couple of brief statements, that'd be great.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and City Council Members. I really appreciate you honoring Red Cross during Red Cross Month. With all the statistics that were just read over by Councilmember Rocha, I'd like to let you know that we're also going to be coming to the City of Salinas once again. We come every year, installing smoke alarms. We'll be doing the all area of John Street and all the feeder streets in, making sure that we have as many residents as prepared as possible and as safe. As you know, single-family fires are predominant here in Salinas, and so we want to make sure that we don't have fatalities that we have to report at our next meeting, right? So whatever, and I pass my card around. If there's anything that you and your constituents can help with, greatly appreciate it. We're always looking for volunteers. Blood donations is another thing that we're also looking for. Each unit that's collected saves three lives, critical. There's people that depend on those blood transfusions and the needs for blood daily, surgeries, what have you. And just the training in general. Unfortunately, we just had the mass shooting here in Monterey County. We're also participating with an active shooter exercise in King City to make sure that we have our communities as safe and as prepared as possible. So I thank you all and want to introduce you to a couple of my volunteers. The Della Roses have just joined the American Red Cross, so we're quite excited. And we have a lot of more volunteers that we're recruiting in this area so that we have folks that truly represent our community here. So I thank you all very much and appreciate all the support that you give to your Red Cross.
Thank you so much. And if we can, I'd like to get a photo with you and the council if that's possible. So councilmembers, if we could. All right. So now we will, public comment. If you wish to make a general public comment or comments on a specific agenda item, you are encouraged to attend the city council meeting in person or attend the Zoom webinar and use the raise hand icon. Emailed public comments received have been distributed to the council and will be entered into the record. Public comments generally are limited to two minutes per speaker. I may further limit the time for the public comments depending on the agenda schedule. We are now open for public comment on items that are not on the agenda and that are in the City of Salinas's subject matter jurisdiction. Comments on agenda items should be held until the items are reached. So welcome. And City Clerk, if we can go ahead and set up two minutes. And go ahead. Yes, ready for you.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Ramón Dominguez. Mi esposa, mi niña.
So we have a translator on Zoom and they'll jump on after they're done. So Mr. Jordi from CAV Interpretation is available.
Okay. So si puede dar su comentarios ahorita? Y hay alguien ahorita que está en Zoom que lo puede transcir ahorita cuando termina?
Okay, ya? Okay, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Ramón. Mi esposa Trini, mi hija Carla. Venimos del Distrito 4. Venemos a pedirle, por favor, que hagan un control de rentas porque estamos pasando por una situación donde me están desalojando de donde vivo para remodelar y aumentar el doble de renta. Yo trabajo en la lechuga, mi esposa en la fresa. Apenas nos alcanza el dinero para pagar la renta y no se nos hace justo. Es lo que le venimos a pedir, que hagan un control de renta, por favor, porque se están abusando demasiado. Pues es lo que les pedimos, que tomen en cuenta eso, que las rentas, es que nomás quieren aumentar. Están cobrando, mi hermana acá ha rentado un cuarto por 1,100 dólares donde yo vivo. Quieren que nos salgamos para remodelar y el doble de renta. Y eso lo están haciendo con mucha gente en todo Salinas, en todas partes. Hagan eso, por favor. Yo tengo cuatro hijos, trabajo en la lechuga, mi esposa en la fresa. Apenas nos alcanza para mantenernos y todavía para que estén subiendo y subiendo las rentas. Y ahora que quieren poner impuestos a los viles, la comida está bien cara. ¿Qué vamos a hacer? Mucha gente está optando para irse para otras partes. Nosotros tenemos 25 años aquí. Donde yo vivo tengo 18 años y mis hijos en sus escuelas. Y para sacarnos así, ¿dónde voy a ir con mis hijos? Por favor, tomen en cuenta todo eso, la renta, la renta, por favor. Él es mi comentario. Por favor.
Muchas gracias.
Gracias.
Buenas tardes. Permítame un minuto, señora.
Jordi, if you can come over on the English translation for that, please.
One moment, we're just trying to see if we can.
Hear me now. Okay, you can hear.
Yes. We can hear you now.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Ramón Dominguez. Here's my wife, Trini, and my daughter Carla. We live in District 4. We're coming here to request you to elaborate a local control, rent control policy. Currently, right now, I'm being evicted of the place where I live. The owner of the building wants to remodel and take us all out so he can remodel and increase the rent afterwards, even up to $1,000. I work in the lettuce fields and my wife works on the strawberry fields. The rent control is quite needed, not only for me, but for several residents of the Salinas City. Definitely, I have lived here for more than 28 years with my wife. We have procreated a family over 25 years. I have three kids. And they have attended to local schools for all these times. So what am I gonna do if they increase the rent? Where I'm gonna go? Where I'm gonna be able to go with all my family? Definitely, a lot of families are thinking to go anywhere else instead of being able to continue enduring their life over here. As I said, I'm a field worker. I work in the lettuce fields and my wife in the strawberry fields. As many families do, we all need rent control to avoid the abuse that is being caused by the owners of the apartments that we live or the homes that we have. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And bienvenida. Y ahorita ya pueden pasar.
Buenas tardes. Soy Marina Zarate. Vengo del Distrito 2, de la Escuelita. Hoy estoy aquí para entregar 800 peticiones para un control de renta. Hemos estado participando en las anteriores juntas del concilio entregando más peticiones. Con estas, en total, van a ser 2,800 peticiones. Familias que necesitamos que ustedes apoyen a un control de renta. Gracias. Como a mí me está pasando que me están subiendo la renta, apenas tengo cinco meses. Y pues, me están subiendo la renta, 200 dólares. Y pues, necesitamos un control de renta, por favor. Les pido, por favor, que voten para un control de renta. Gracias.
Gracias. Le puede dar las firmas a la señorita Patricia.
My name is María Zarate from District 2. I've been here living for, I have been living here in District 2. Well, I'm coming here with 800 petitions of rent control. We have already with the Escuelita submitted already 200, 2,800 petitions for the rent control policy. We would like to request you that approve and write down a rent control policy. I have been living in the place where I live for only five months and they're already increasing the rent $200. We quite need, we need a rent control. What can I do for my family? I live with them and I only have lived there for five months and we're having an increase of $200. Please do something about it.
Gracias. Bienvenido.
Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Jesús Estrada. Soy un organizador con CCA. Igual manera, yo vengo a expresar mi sentimiento también. Con la gente con que estoy trabajando tiene el mismo problema, aumento de renta, más de lo que es normal, de 10%. Eso hemos encontrado mucho. Entonces creo que es muy importante de no olvidar la discusión que se hubo o la necesitiva que hubo en 2023, octubre 24, 2023. Por favor, si pueden, pues discutirlo y avanzar qué se puede hacer aquí en Ciudad de Salinas sobre aumento de renta que es cada día más, la aumentan a la familia. Pero los propietarios, ellos no le importa en condición que vive en cada familia. Ellos quieren cobrar y quieren aumentar. Entonces creo que eso es importante ya ver hasta dónde estamos con eso y cuáles son los pasos que tenemos que seguir junto con ustedes como la comunidad que somos nosotros. Gracias.
Gracias.
Thank you. Good afternoon to all. My name is, my name is Jesús Estrada. I work with CCA. Same way, I come to express my feelings about the same that people have come before me. The way that more than 10% of increases are quite well, quite well spread throughout the city, sometimes even more on the rent that they pay for. I come here to ask you once again, the initiative that started in October of 2023 about rent controls, to please have a discussion, a deep discussion about it, about the absolute need that all the residents have regarding a rent control. The increase to the families are done by the owners but don't care about their well-being. Definitely, it's needed that something to be done for all the families that are suffering this situation. Please, we ask you to have a sincere conversation between you in order to be able to address this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. I would like to address the council regarding the email that I sent you all last night. I'm requesting for copies of Kimberly and McShane's reimbursement approvals as well as the council from the very first day they all sat in those seats. I'm also requesting for the attendance records on anyone who sat in on any meetings where Kimberly and McShane requested money for Monterey County Business Council and the Salinas Chamber of Conference. Them sitting there during the process can be viewed as a form of coercion and influence. I would also like to know why they were never asked to remove themselves during the approval process. That is a huge conflict in interest and against the standards of the positions they sit in, and they know that. And if they did sit in the approval process, it shows a huge display of arrogance and entitlement, which no one should be allowed to exercise being on the city council. And you, Mr. Attorney, I pray did not allow that. I'm also requesting that Kimberly and McShane be investigated for the misuse of city money, and it doesn't matter the dollar amount. What matters is the misuse of their position. And I'll be requesting that they pay that money back if they sat in on any of the meetings when it was approved. I'd also like to address Mr. McShane, but he's not here. But I would like to address the racist comment that he did say and for all of you that sat there and let him do that. The meetings that were held after that, people from your districts came and addressed their concerns over that. And you guys sat there and you were quiet. You guys need to step up and defend your districts because people voted you guys where you were at. I'm also recommending that you guys do a public forum for people can answer questions and you guys answer them because you let people come in here and express themselves and they take time out of their day and you guys don't answer them. You're mute. You guys are quiet. They deserve answers. Ponte los pilas, like I said in the email. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. I would like to add on to what the wonderful members of LULAC have said. Last week, we were invited, me on behalf of the Salinas Juneteenth Committee and Yomoja Program. My name is Michaela Miller. This is my friend Rose. We were here and invited to a roundtable to be here in proclamation for Black History Month and everything that we're doing. But we are also brought to our attention by the amazing members of LULAC that here on the council floors, there was a hate speech, a microaggression that was said. In some area codes, you know, they'll stab you with a knife, and others, they'll get you with strong talk. Well, I'm here with that strong talk and saying that we love your proclamations, but now it's time to implement them. It's time to create action more than just talk. It's time to actually honor those plaques that you're giving these beautiful people and show where you stand in your actions. His actions speak louder than strong talk. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Kimberly Bryant, and I'm here to offer a prayer to the city council, to the city council members and everyone in this room. And I'd ask anyone that would like to and feel inclined to please bow their head and pray with me, the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, and deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen. The Lord bless you and keep you. Make his face shine upon you and be glorious to you. The Lord turn his face toward you and give you peace. Thank you very much for the job you do. We appreciate each one of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Bienvenida.
Gracias. Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es María Chávez. Estoy vivo en el Distrito 4, en un proyecto de apartamentos ayudado por Hatz y Cahill. Pido, nos ayuden a una estabilización de renta, ya que varias familias estamos sufriendo. Donde yo vivo, me dijeron que ellos no tuvieron nada que ver con el aumento de renta, que buscar ayuda afuera. Y que ya que ando con la Escuelita, en la oficina, digo el de la oficina o administrador y vicepresidenta de la Mesa Directiva, dijeron que no tengo que decir lo que nos está pasando allí. Yo nomás les dije que somos familias afectadas y tengo que hablar de lo que estamos pasando. También me dijeron que no debo tocar puertas y juntar firmas. Le dije que tengo derecho, derecho, ya que otras familias que viven ahí también son afectadas y están sufriendo. Estoy hablando y me preocupa, ya que me dijeron que no hablara, que me podía meter en problemas. Muchas gracias.
Gracias.
So my name is María Chávez. I live in District 4, in a complex made by Hatz Call. I come to you today to ask you to have a clear discussion about the rent control. Many families are suffering where I live. They increased the rent and they told me that the administration told me that they were not at fault due to the increase. And I should go and knock the doors, another's door, and come and find another place and answer or help for that. Since I work with the Escuelita and come to this meeting as well, I started to go and knocking on the doors of my neighbors. The president board members and members of the board told me that I shouldn't be knocking the doors where I live, that I should go only anywhere else to collect the signatures that we're doing. And they advised me not to doors and doors, to seek for this help in another way or in another matter or in another place, since they were able not to do nothing for me. I come to clearly request to all of you to have a sincere discussions about the rent control. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. A lot of people upset about rent up here. And Bidenomics is baffling. I sure hope that they take their fight, not just here, but to JP Morgan and Wells Fargo down the street because they're the root cause of this rent problem, along with the Bidenomics. I noticed here a few weeks ago, we had the situation where we removed our mayor, the only woman, Monterey County Water Board, Board of 10 men. Here tonight, we replaced the mayor with another man. I don't know, someone say that's toxic. But what I'd like to talk about is the loss of quality, quality people running our city. And I look at our police chief, Felicia, who left us and trying to figure out why. He said it was political and I went back and looked through some stuff. Have somebody working really hard and it seemed like he was fighting all along the way with this panel. Worked really hard and received grant money, $1.2 million to say, buy some technology with. And a suggestion of this board here, this council, I think it was Protem Orsonio here. Well, thank you for the cost savings. So let's remove from the general fund of the police budget and defund your department by the same amount you got out of the grant. We want to talk about defunding. You want to blame and toss fingers. Well, there's a video right there for the public, everybody to see who is looking to defund our police, make it more dangerous for these people as we see in King City that spreads here. Obviously, it spreads from here to there. Crime, killings. Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay. My name is Sherry Banks. I live here in Salinas. God, I have so much I want to talk about and I don't even know where to start. But my main subject is the homeless people. Okay? What you guys do to the homeless, scoop up their stuff. You know, I try to be advocate for a lot of people because I used to be homeless. And it's not a funny, fun thing. But when the city comes in and scoops everybody's stuff up, that's very sad because it's hard for them to start all over again. There are so many empty properties I've seen in Salinas. And what they need to do is take the money and make a safe place for people to live. If they can't, they can't afford to get their own place, but have a safe place for them to park, you know, a safe place to be instead of scooping up their stuff all the time. I'm so devastated by this. You know, I used to live at the Night End, you know? And now these people are worried that they're going to be back on the streets again, you know? I told the people three years ago that that contractor was a crook, but nobody wanted to listen to me. But now you guys found out that he's a crook. $36 million of the money has been taken. So there's no place for the people to go now. You have to think about the people. These are your people, okay? They voted for you and you need to do something about it. And they shouldn't have to end up being homeless because you guys don't do anything. Matter of fact, I left a message for you, Mr. Attorney. I don't know you first, I can't see the name, but I left a message for you because I needed to talk to you about that. I have cops harassing me now, pulling me over because I speak my piece. But I'm not, they can pull me over as many times as they want. I'm totally legal, licensed, everything. But I'm asking you, all of you, to please do something about this. It's a serious matter. Please.
Thank you. Welcome.
Mi nombre es Sergio. Bienvenidos a todos y buenas tardes. Vine a este punto referente a lo que la ciudad está haciendo sobre la pintura en las calles que están pintando para no parquearse. De cierta forma, a mí me había afectado en mi casa con un parqueadero. Hay vecinos que pintaron dos. Mi conformidad o mi punto de vista es de que a veces la ciudad a lo mejor no pensó o no piensa, verdad, de que el lugar de ayudar, sí, en ciertas formas sí se necesita para ciertas calles, pero no a todas las están pintando. Y el problema es de que yo veo, es de que los, de por si no hay Salinas, este, parqueaderos, a veces vamos a tener conflictos con los vecinos porque ya sea que yo pueda parquearme en un vecino que se enoje o viceversa. Eso es mi punto de vista, que ojalá que la ciudad tomara en cuenta a los propietarios que vivimos allí, de que pues, este, los parqueaderos necesitamos. Y estoy... que vivimos allí, de que pues este, los parqueaderos necesitamos y estoy en lo correcto de que sí se, en que ciertas áreas que sí se necesita estaría bien, pero no en todas las calles. Y hay calles que hay, ha habido accidentes y no han puesto señalamientos ahí de la pintura roja que están pintando. Bueno, gracias.
Hello, my name is Sergio. First of all, have a good night to all of you. Hi. I come to the city in regarding to talk about the painting that is being done to signal areas where you can't park, parking spaces that are being painted that you can't park. Definitely, I do agree that it's needed in certain areas, but there are places that has been done where there's a lack of parking space. Definitely, there are some neighbors even that have taken to their own hands on painting areas, so they won't, no one will park in front of them. Definitely, there's a lack of areas where to park your car in public spaces. Definitely, there are areas where it's needed, but there's a lack of parking spaces that will bring the moment that either way I will have to park in a place where my neighbor used to park or vice versa and we can get into conflicts. The need of this is quite a certain, definitely has to be done, but even there are places where this signaling hasn't been happening, where public signaling hasn't been placed. And definitely it should be studied, it should be addressed, and definitely something should do about all this. I just want to come here and give you my point of view on all that. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, City Council. Now, I was going to be here for a different reason, but I got approached by the neighborhood that gentleman just spoke and that's on Rainier. And I went and I took a look at it myself and I approached Councilman Osorio last week and also talked to Andrew Sandoval about it. Now, I do understand that it's a state mandate, we looked into it and it is, but it's giving you a leeway from 10 to 20 feet. Now, I don't think that the city did the research because they just went and they just said, okay, we're going to paint from here to here and do it. Okay, so that's not how it works because there's some houses that literally lost their parking space in front of their house. So now you have all these people in here talking about housing and, you know, rent increases and all that, so what is that, what is that doing to the city? It's increasing the amount of people living in a household. So therefore, you don't have enough room to park in your driveway because city ordinance, okay? So if you park on your driveway illegally, then code enforcement comes in. If you park on your lawn, code enforcement comes in and that's understandable. We don't want to see that, but you go and mark the streets also, it's like, okay, well, where are they going to park? Now, you're allowing to rebuild their garages into living quarters, you know, building up, building in the back of the property. Whatever it is that you're doing is being allowed, but yeah, code enforcement is enforcing their codes, right? And those are not being changed according to what's going on in the city. So what I'm saying is, is go look at it and if the state mandates that you paint that curb red, then you know what? It's giving you a minimum. You don't have to do the maximum. So do the research. So, you know, it all goes in hand in hand. If you have so much people and you have so many cars, then you're going to have that problem, you know? And I looked at some of them, if you really look at it, it says on crosswalks, right? But if you look at them and they painted it red 20 feet and it doesn't even affect the view, so how does that make sense? Who made that decision? And I know the ball gets passed around, you know, but somebody's got to be responsible for that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, good afternoon. I'm Eloiseum, I'm a District Three resident and I just wanted to comment about the process about the hiring of the general manager, which it seems to me that the city isn't being very transparent about that. I didn't receive, I guess there was a special meeting, but I didn't open my email in time to get notified about that meeting. And it seems like it's always on the closed session about that. And so, I mean, people want to have some input about that because it's a very important position. It's a very, very highly paid position and, you know, there's a lot that's expected from the city manager. I myself, I mean, I'm not a longtime resident, but the city manager that we had, I didn't see really anything wrong with what he did. I, you know, I don't listen to a lot of gossip and everything about what he did or what he didn't do, but it's a very expensive proposition to always be changing these positions. And the other thing that I wanted to mention very quickly is that the month of Ramadan, which is the Muslim month of fasting, is coming up pretty soon. And there aren't a lot of Muslims, I think, in Salinas, but there are enough Muslims that go to schools and go in the workplace and it's mandatory for Muslims to fast during Ramadan. So please be kind and understanding and don't treat them like, I don't know, terrorists from 9/11 because that's not, you know, 9/11 was 25 years ago. Be nice to people, be kind.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, city staff. My name is Amy Salmina. I am a local property manager and this evening I wanted to come up here and just discuss our homeless situation and removing the encampments and things that had happened with the railroad staff and police, which was much appreciated. So Orlando, thank you so much for answering my phone call this last week and taking time to speak with me. My clients, which are the property owners and the tenants, truly appreciate it. The biggest thing that we're dealing with here, I feel, I mean, in regards to the homeless, I'm not saying we don't have a homeless problem. I work in housing, so I absolutely know we have a lack of housing, but we have a huge drug and mental health problem here. That is one of the biggest reasons why I feel that there are a lot of homeless that are living in the Chinatown district. So I, in discussion this evening, what I am representing is that business district and the tenants that I represent there. I have a tenant there who's been there for 32 years that is really just appalled of way how things are happening. What I really think and what they really think, and I've really encouraged them to please come and speak, is that we need a huge police presence. That is a huge problem. And I appreciate that you guys are wanting to give these new police people an incentive, but it's not about an incentive. We need to pay our police staff more. We need to want them to stay here instead of going to Hollister or Santa Clara or all these other areas. My son in particular is a firefighter. He will make so much more money going out of the area when he wants to stay local. Our police staff want to stay local, but making that presence of having them there every single day does make a presence for all of these homeless to stay out of the area. And I'm there every single day, just so you know. So seven days a week, I am in Chinatown. I'm physically removing people from my own property by cutting down their tents that they cannot attach to our building, asking them nicely, and I have a police standby every single time, asking them to come help me. It's now gotten to the point where they respect me enough to say, okay, and move. But anyhow, if we could really increase our police presence, I really, really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes, todos ustedes. Yo vengo en representación de la Costa Plaza. Hemos cinco miembros de la Mesa Directiva, José Albor, Margarita Gutiérrez, Félix Gutiérrez, Ana Carrillo, Teresa Gutiérrez. Estamos representando 306 unidades de la Costa Plaza. Cualquer, estamos, estudiamos los bailos, las reglas de ahí. Cual todas las familias, nadie quiere respetar nada. Hemos recibido amenazas anónimas. A Margarita le destruyeron sus carros, sus vidrios, por querer hacer que vivamos una manera de respeto, unos con otros, tener un respeto. Lo que en ahora, en este mundo que estamos, no hay ningún respeto de nada. No nos respetamos ni a nosotros mismos. Les digo por mí, verdad? Yo hablo de esto porque yo estoy ahora en la Mesa Directiva. Yo no soy a lo que es estar ante un gobierno pequeño. Ahora yo los, digo, todos ustedes, digo, híjole, está tremendo, eh, donde están ustedes. Porque yo que estoy acá, con 303 familias, 303 unidades, está tremenda la cosa. Ustedes, les doy gracias por su trabajo y vamos a tener una junta en este mes, la junta que se llama Grande, para todos los dueños, las 306 unidades, y quería pedir un oficial de policía. Porque siempre hemos agredido verbalmente, hemos, híjole, no les puedo decir las palabras otras porque es falta de respeto, en primer lugar, pero sí les quiero pedir un oficial de policía. Mi nombre es José Albor, quiero al Departamento de Policía y pedirles un oficial por dos horas, que esté ahí para que nos apoye y haya orden. Más que nada, haya orden para nosotros mismos. Muchísimas gracias por su trabajo que hacen. Estamos agradecidos. Gracias.
Jordi from JV, can you please translate?
Hi, my name is José Albordeki, from the Costa Plaza neighborhood. I come in the representation of the five board members in the Costa Plaza. We're a neighborhood of 306 units. In Costa Plaza, we guide ourselves by the bylaws that we have. Due to the, all the issues that we have been having, we are asking for the city, now that we as board have been joining as a local mandate for them, as you as well do, we have seen how can you be mistreated by others, by other neighbors, being insulted, being told, I don't imagine, things that you as well, we have suffered. I have, I come to a petition to make to all of you, to request that a police officer, since we're going to, a police officer be on site for our Ganda meeting that we are going to have with 306 units, owners of the units that we're going to have. That way, first of all, we can be supported by them and keep the peace in the place meanwhile this meeting is taking place. I do understand now what you go through. I appreciate that all you do for the city, since now we see ourselves as well in the same situation. Even one of the members, Maritza, her car was broken, all the windows of her car. Definitely now we see how difficult it is to govern. Thank you for all the work that you kindly do for all of us. Thank you.
Hello, welcome.
Good afternoon. My name's Denise Sustrada. The City of Salinas Historic Resource Board was dormant for a long period of time, but thankfully they're up and running now. They're doing good work. They're your advisory body. I attend and I'm very appreciative of the work they do. I'm here to ask you tonight, there is one vacancy on that board right now that's been vacant for a long period of time. I'm aware that a skilled professional has applied for that position and hasn't heard anything. So I'm here tonight to ask your assistance to fill that board that will be your advisory body and help you out. So thank you very much.
Hello, welcome.
Mayor Osorio and members of the council. Frank Saunders, I'm downtown property owner, also a member of the CIA group in the downtown. And I'm here about homeless. It's just beyond imagination how much is, they are affecting our downtown. And you wonder why we have vacancies in the 102 and 300 block, which have been fixed up and we've spent a fortune down there, but we still have people that are defecating and urinating in our buildings. Every single morning, I have a man who I pay every day to clean up the alcoves in our buildings. It's just gross. The police will not respond, or if they do, it's so, so long after the people are gone that it doesn't do any good. So I'm just, you know, I saw the cleanup that was done on the tracks. I believe that was done by Union Pacific. It was good, there was a massive amount of trash. I talked to one of the tractor drivers and he said he had seen so many needles that he's afraid to get off of his tractor for fear of stepping on one of them. And this is right in the downtown. It's only across the street from our center city. It's just, we just can't let this happen any longer. We're just going to spend, what, over the last five years, $47 million on the homeless? And I don't think we've made much of a dent. The city of San Antonio built a 1,600-person homeless shelter. Now, Salinas could do something similar, maybe half as big, whatever. We're not as big as San Antonio, obviously, but we need a place for these people to go. The Boise decision says you cannot move these people, they have the right to be on public property. And if there's no place for them to go. The only way we're going to stop this continuous cleanups and people moving is to build a place where they can go. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hello, welcome.
Good afternoon, mayor, city council. Larry Hira Haro, Salinas Chinatown. Previously, Chinatown was trending positively with sidewalks clean and greater outreach services. The previous city manager, police department and city staff were committed to revitalizing the area. Unfortunately, I must report degradation of the area, though not so much about encampments, but greater people sleeping in the streets and trespassing. Drug dealing is still rampant. When requests for service, we get slow responses and get replies of lack of resources. Manny Martinez, who was very committed to cleaning Chinatown, selected a person responsible for homeless services. But PD has a difficulty creating a presence in Chinatown because they must rely on overtime or mandatory overtime. Furthermore, there's no consistent presence to have community policing beginning in Chinatown. I'm of the opinion that it's not a funding issue and we must continue to complete funding, but rather it is a recruitment and retention issue. So I implore you to work with, work on police staffing and why there are so, why there are so many departures. We acknowledge the city's commitment to outreach services to solve the complex homeless issue, but it will also require quite a bit of time. Downtown streets team is doing a great job, but trash continues to be a problem in the area. We suggest public receptacles be placed. And finally, the high rate of city staff turnover creates inconsistency. And inconsistency breeds uncertainty. We are anxious to have the consistent support and commitment to Chinatown revitalization by a stable force of city staff leaders. And before I end, I'd like to announce publicly that while it only recently passed with the icon of the Salinas Chinatown. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Tom Yamashita. I'm the president of the Buddhist temple of Salinas located on 14 California Street. Our temple is located in the heart of Salinas Chinatown and unfortunately, we're at the epicenter of our Salinas homeless problems. We have many people with severe mental problems, drug addicts, and our streets are just every day filled with garbage, needles. People are defecating on the street, urinating. And I'm there a few times, a few times a week seeing these people in person and they really do need help. And as the previous gentleman said, they do need a place to go. We just keep pushing them from one place to another and unfortunately, it's our temple area that gets blunt of that force movement. So we have been here for the past 100 years. This year marks our 100th year of our presence in the Chinatown. And we're there because we have been discriminated against. It was the only place that our people could live. And we were forced to relocate during the war and so on. So those are the past history, but we have continued to try to make this our home, but we're literally being forced out of our location after 100 years. So we implore you to keep, please pay attention to this area. Help us revitalize this area back to its past glory. We need resources, we need money. We need resources, we need money, we need solutions to solve this problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hello, welcome.
Thank you, city council. My name is Marie Yamashita. I'm the secretary at the Buddhist temple of Salinas. I'm also here to ask for help with the homeless situation on California Street and in Salinas Chinatown. We have many people living in their cars and many people who are simply sleeping on the street. It's a real crisis. We fill our temple dumpster every week with the garbage that we pick up on California Street. And we also are dealing with human waste and pet waste. We also have had people coming into the property. On February 23rd, we had a person lying across the entrance to our temple office. And when I asked him to move so that I could enter the building, he refused. And I had to call the police for assistance. And we've also had people coming into the property when we aren't there doing random things like turning out our garden hose and walking away. Our temple was founded in 1924, we are 100 years old this year, but people are afraid to come to visit the temple. And I've been advised not to go to the temple alone. We ask for the city to help in providing assistance to these people and to help make the area safer for everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hello, welcome.
Hi, my name's Herb Wong and I'm a lifelong resident of Salinas and I have, I'm a member of the Buddhist church as well as the, a member of the Chinese Association of Salinas at 1 California Street. And I support and we certainly urge the council to listen to our, our concerns and we certainly want you to expedite whatever you need to do to bring revitalization to Chinatown. Chinatown's been ignored for the longest time and certainly, it certainly began well before the underpass or the railroad underpass was put into place. At that time, Chinatown became an isolated island within the city of Salinas. So we need you to do something soon, or as soon as you can. And, you know, we need you to fill your positions and move forward on programs to make Salinas a better city. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, welcome.
There were some interesting comments earlier by some hardworking people. And if we don't do something to help them, we, they may leave the area, which will create more problems, but that's not why I'm here. My name is Eric Peterson and I would like to address the issue of department heads. And I'm excluding the city manager from this because he's on the agenda later. We recently almost hired a refugee from a corrupt police department that's under Department of Justice oversight, or about to be. And we can do better than that by looking within. We've got some really good city employees, we already know what they're like. That's a step in the right direction. Really good city employees who are willing to take at least some of the jobs. And we should look at them and try to hire them instead of risking something on somebody who would basically blow up on us. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, welcome.
Hello, good evening, council members. My name is Grace Gomez. I manage Moon Gate Plaza and I am here to express my concerns, the growing number of guests in Chinatown. Previously Chinatown was moving in the right direction, but since the increase in population is becoming difficult to manage, the drugs, the crime, the people overdosing is getting worse. The increase in guests has also led to notable increase of litter, waste, and other sanitation issues in our community. As a manager of Moon Gate, I have witnessed firsthand the impact of the issues in Chinatown. We believe that additional resources are needed to address these issues effectively. We urge the city council to allocate more resources and personnel to help combat these issues and provide support to the homeless population. Cleaning up and helping Chinatown to thrive and address the needs of the homeless population will not only improve the quality of the life of the residents and businesses, but also create a more welcoming, vibrant Chinatown area for everyone. Having a presence of law enforcement makes a difference in our community, Chinatown, and divert the crime from Chinatown. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hello, welcome.
My name is Bradley Clinton and for five months, almost five months, I've been taking pictures of all the city streets and the work they do is pathetic. They come in and do potholes and you have to go back and redo the same pothole a week or a month later. I got a meeting with, with Mr. Pia and Mr. Jacobs and they acknowledged the problem, but I don't think they're really addressing the problem. And on top of that, I've tried to get a, a meeting with the mayor and I went through all the hoops, emailed her, emailed Lizette, and I've gone there in person and I've mailed and I've called. And they've never responded to me. I had to call them and I've been turned down. So I'm trying to figure out why. I'm a citizen, I'm going through the hoops and I'm denied. And one of those, I've been sending live pictures to Jacobs and Mr. Pia. Well, over on Hartnell, there's a crosswalk there that looks like a war zone. And it's pretty sad that people going, walking to school have to go through literally potholes all the way through this, and they come in and fill one or two and say they're done. And this is really pathetic. And I think what they need to do is start putting, working on the cracks. In four, five months, I haven't seen one crack of the picture, of the, of the requests I've done filled. So that's where the problem is. The cracks turn into potholes, they get bigger and bigger, then they can't handle them. Right now, they're, they're out of control. So they can just fill the cracks, even like West Marcus Street, which is pathetic, with all the, it looks like snail trails, it'd be a lot better. So I'm deciding quit doing the potholes and start doing, filling the cracks. And that'll, and then start, if you're gonna start doing those little patches, cut them out and repack them so they don't come back again. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Protem and city council members. Rachel Saunders here from Big Sur Land Trust. I wanted to take this opportunity to say that after an extensive community-based process that we began back in July of 2023, we are happy to announce that the name of the future park, the 73-acre park that we're building in the Car Lake area, will be Ensen Community Park. Ensen is an indigenous word, which means blackberry, which was an important food source for indigenous peoples in this area. During the final online survey we did in January, 966 people participated and Ensen Community Park received the most support because people felt it was important to honor the original peoples of this area and their relationship to the land. During that process, we also learned about the history of Nikkei, Japanese-Americans and their descendants. We feel it's also very important to honor Nikkei, who farmed in the Salinas Valley and specifically at Car Lake. We look forward to working with members of the Japanese-American community to determine the best way to acknowledge their history at the park. We are so grateful to everyone who participated over these many months and to the individuals representing different areas of the city, who served on the naming committee. Thanks to the council and the mayor for appointing wonderful people to sit on the naming committee, which reviewed hundreds of names that came in and identified the top three names, Ensen, Nikkei, and Car Lake. Thanks also to Mayor Protem Orsorio and Kristen Lundquist for their support of the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, welcome.
Good afternoon, my name's Alicia Espino and I'm here to comment on the homeless people that are surrounding Salinas. Salinas usually talks about love, right? Your commercials in "Amo Salinas", "We Love Salinas". Well, I've lived all my life here in Salinas. I was brought here when I was seven years old and this is where my parents came. So now I've been here for a long time. I worked 31 years at Alisa High School in the attendance. So I know a lot of the people here, not the East Side people mostly. But to see people, the homeless, all around the whole town is very sad, especially in this time of the season. There's no shelters here. I hear about Santa Cruz, I hear about Watsonville, them doing, doing something about it. You, as council members, shame on you. Do not do one thing for them. You haven't opened any shelters for them, at least for the season. There's so much people out there, I'm not just talking about addicts, but mental people too. Or people that have been, you don't know what the tragedies has been in their lives. But it does make this city look bad when you hear about other cities doing better than you all here. So as a services, what services do you have? I'm aware of the services that you guys give or people that you have out there supposedly that are doing their job, no they're not. Because the shelter you had in Laurel, what happened? I heard about people being fired there because they were not doing their job. Nobody is taking concern in this and the shelters, finding out, are you, each place, are they doing their work? When they make appointments, these people go and they're ignored? That's why they're out there in the streets.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. Hello.
Good evening, city council. José Guerra again, Representative Montebella. Wish I have more issues with that soccer league out there, the parking, code enforcement. It's not coming out. Someone's saying there are, they're not coming out. No one's out there. PD can't come out. It's such a minimal thing to have PD come on and deal with that. I mean, I feel like I'm at the door and I'm knocking and you guys are looking through the people, but nobody's opening the door. You know, I need somebody to open the door and come and help us. We need your help. We need this taken care of. I've sent an email today to a lot of members. It's one to Mr. Pia, one to Ms. Lundquist, and both of them are, I'm blocked out of their emails for some reason. I don't know how that happened. The email's blocked. I don't know if I got the wrong email or, can you guys please send me an email? I'm el.big.guerra@gmail.com. Send me an email, please, and I'll be happy to discuss it. But I, other than that, thank you guys, you know. Hopefully we get this new city manager thing taken care of and we can get back on the road and fix this beautiful community we live in. We have a beautiful place we live in. We need to take care of all these people that pay taxes. And if anybody pays taxes, I think Montebella probably pays the most. So let's take care of the people that are, that are actually doing a lot more and coming out here and representing for the communities. Let's take care of everybody, guys. All your districts, you know, you can all roll your eyes, it doesn't matter to me, it's all good. You just, please, help us do your job, do your job, please. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Mary Ann Warden. You heard me the other day about the streets not being fixed right. Well, Thursday, I was going behind the truck on Ryder, filling up the holes, great. They filled up this one, but this one right next to them, they didn't do it. They had a whole bunch of them like that. They fixed two of them, the third one, they weren't fixing. So I stopped my car and I rolled down the window and I said, hey, you've just didn't finish your job. There's all these other ones that you haven't finished. He looked at me as if, well, I probably, most likely, didn't understand a word I was saying. And the other man that was throwing the little gravel on there, that came out as soon as he did it, went on. So when I came home, I went down to the corner of Ryder and Del Monte. There was about eight of them had been there. They fixed only part of them, the other ones, they did not. And they did fix the one on the corner of Del Monte and Sanborn, right at the crosswalk. But you have a great big one on Sanborn and Marcus Street. Now that's been filled up two or three times, the same as the one in Del Monte. And it keeps, it wasn't done proper, neither one of them was done proper. And every time, those holes come there. Until somebody falls in one of those holes in the crosswalks, maybe things will be done right. Because somebody is gonna sue you guys for not doing the things that are supposed to be special when they're endangering children and older people trying to cross those intersections.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that has a public comment?
Good afternoon, Protem Orsorio and city council and attorney and city manager. My name is Gloria De La Rosa and I'm here because I, I, I would like you to tell me why or what happened with the plan with the warming shelters you've heard today. The weather, okay, we've had some bad weather and we don't know, right now it's so erratic that we don't know what's coming ahead of us. You need a place to, to send our unsheltered population. Just like Santa Cruz County did, three shelters. These warming shelters are different from shelters. They stay there 24 hours, they get something to eat, and they're there, they're protected. And you wouldn't have them all over the downtown area. And they have bathrooms and they have, you have to have running water so they could wash their hands. You can have a public health issue, just like Santa Cruz is having right now with the Shigella outbreak, which is a bacterial infection that spreads, okay? People can die from that. So I, I am, I am just a little baffled at why there wasn't a plan for warming shelters. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Mayor, city council members, and of course, our attorney. I think you have heard from the people, all the problems that are, we are all facing. And I think it's time that every one of you, head departments, everybody, put your thinking caps on and find solutions to all the problems. Not tomorrow, not next year, starting now, okay? Or it's gonna get worse. Pretty soon, if it continues like this, we're gonna be fighting amongst each other. So please, do something.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else? City clerk, is there anybody on Zoom?
Yes, we have a few on Zoom. So Elizabeth Rug, you have two minutes.
Hello, welcome.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth, hi, my name's Elizabeth Rug and I just wanted to give a public comment to share about just hearing that there is such a strain on both the business community and the residences of Salinas in addressing homelessness, specifically unsheltered homelessness. And I just wanted to express that there are solutions out there that I work with a company called Palate Shelter, we're a benefit corporation and we're a workforce development company. And so we provide jobs and those who have been previously homeless inform and guide us in how we address homelessness. And we have supported 40 different cities across the state of California, including many of your neighbors, many of the counties in your neighbor, in your neighborhood. And we support and help increase shelter very quickly. We can stand up shelter in a number of weeks and they're all managed by third-party service providers who are, who have skills and are trained in trauma-informed care and help with addressing mental health needs and addressing substance misuse needs and helping people get back on their feet and recover to be able to transition onto permanent housing. And it is a crisis that you guys are experiencing and there is help for you all. And having a, having immediate shelter that's managed by teams that are specialized in caring for those in crisis is a solution and is a part of helping to relieve the strain that you're experiencing in your community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wes White, you have two minutes.
Hi, good afternoon, Wes White, Salinas Monterey County Homeless Union. Also wanting to talk about the sweeps and basically how the city pushed everyone to the train tracks to be able to blame Union Pacific for doing this tragedy. You know, if we were really worried about health and safety, we would have running water, we would have electricity. water, we would have electricity available. The drop-in center almost closed, and now it's being run by volunteers from Closer Walk. We're saving money, yet we're not actually trying to help people still. Mitigate the trash, the trash is real easy. Uh, you know, you could put a little sticker, a seal, the county seal, just like how we did, and shelter in place, and that's probably the way we should go moving forward. People need to be somewhere twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. You could put a county seal on there, and they're associated with their H O Y S cars number, um, which is how they get into housing to begin with, so we can identify them. They're now harmless, they're not homeless anymore. And we're trying to better their life, we're not just trying to approach them and say, you can't be here. They need to be somewhere. And if you don't like them there, then open up a place, and that's where your programs come back. But there's plenty of people, just documented, undocumented, it doesn't matter, you become a not legalized citizen once you have to live outside. And, uh, you know, we're afforded inalienable rights, life, liberty, pursuit of happiness, food, clothing, shelter. We, we need somewhere to be every day without any kind of mess with, you know? And consistency is really the key. I'm, I'm a teacher, and that's what I've understood the whole time. Children need consistency, and so do people that, that we're trying to help. Okay, we need a scaffold and give firm foundation for, and then they can believe that we actually wanna help them. But right now, most people that live outside, they don't wanna talk to anyone, they don't wanna get messed with, especially by the police and field outreach, you know? You're putting people's lives at risk because of, of the way the city wants to do things. You wanna hurt people, that's the same reason why them train tracks were there, that was the county line, that's how everybody had to go, that's where you've been.
Thank you for your comments.
Robin, two minutes.
Thank you very much. Um, I wanna say that I'm really baffled by, um, Mr. Pia, your, your decision to have gone forward with choosing a Chief of Police. There's a tremendous amount, a, a lack of transparency, and the meeting that followed was also not at all transparent. I don't believe we're supporting our police department at all, and I think that was an egregious slap in the face. We definitely need our police, you can hear our people speaking about homelessness and not feeling safe. And at every corner, this council, the rhetoric does not match the actions. Each and every one of you have fiduciary responsibilities, and you have not been upholding them. You're allowing your personal conflicts and desires to supersede. And if you're unable to not get past that, please do not run for reelection. And Mr. Pia, please resign. Thank you.
No more public comment on Zoom.
Thank, thank you, and, and now we'll be, uh, ending public comment and going on to announcements. City of Salinas one hundred and fiftieth anniversary, uh, we're gonna be receiving an announcement from Sophie Rome, our Communications Manager, and Daisy Gallardo. Hello.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and City Council. Uh, my name is Daisy Gallardo, and I'm a Community Outreach Assistant with the City of Salinas, and I'm just here to share a little bit about our celebration. So on March fourth of eighteen seventy-four, the City of Salinas was incorporated officially by the State of California as the Town of Salinas and made it, making it an official California city. So we have partnered with local community groups as well as with city staff to plan our celebration and celebrate our history and just share a little bit more about Salinas' history as more than just one story, but, uh, all those stories together. So I have Sophia Rome here with me to share a little bit more.
Hi, good afternoon. So one of the things before I share a little more about the event is I really wanna recognize Daisy, she's become our City of Salinas resident historian. Um, you know, I, I gave her this project as a special project, and she's with us part-time, but has done an amazing job. And anything you wanna know about Salinas' history, she's, she's the person to ask. Um, so as Daisy mentioned, we've worked with some really great community partners to make sure that we build an event that is, um, really representative of our community and goes beyond what we, we hear most about and really digs deep into what our community is about and how our community came to be, um, the City of Salinas and with the hundred and sixty-five thousand plus residents that we have today. Um, so as part of the event, we're asking that the community come and take a journey through time with us. On Saturday, April sixth, the event will be from ten AM to two PM. And we have two different locations, and this is part of the journey. So we'll start out with a, a welcome and, um, some special guest speakers at the Intermodal Transportation Center or the train, the train station. Um, you'll have an opportunity to tour all of the free museums that are there, which is the First Mayor's House, um, the Railroad Museum, as well as the Welcome Center that gives a lot of Salinas' history. And then we also have a walking tour that goes into downtown. Um, community members will be able to see some of the historic buildings and learn a little bit more about them, um, on the walking tour. And we'll end up at CSUMV at City Center, um, where the first three hundred guests will, um, get to tour the Steinbeck Museum for free. Um, and we'll also have a Community Resource Fair that will be representative of, um, the present and the future of, of our community. So, um, just save the date, mark your calendars, and hope to see everybody there.
Thank you so much for the information, and, uh, we look forward to getting more updates as they come. Thank you so much. So now we're gonna move on to presentations, ID twenty-four dash zero eight five, City of Salinas Homeless Services. And we will be receiving a report from Rod Powell, our Assistant Community Development Director.
Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem, if I may. I would just, my name is Lisa Brinton, I'm the Community Development Director. I would just like to recognize that this is Rod Powell's last presentation before you. Um, his last day with the city will be this Friday, March eighth, and he will be assuming a position as Assistant City Manager with the City of Hollister. I just wanna take this moment to recognize all of his efforts, and it's under his leadership that millions of dollars have come into the city to provide supportive services and build affordable housing for our communities. With that, I'll turn over the presentation to Rod.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and Council Members. It's, uh, once again, an honor to be in front of you today, uh, to give you an overview of your city's homeless services platform. I'd like to preface this with what you've heard, you, you clearly have a community that cares, and I have no doubt that you care. So, um, this is not gonna be as comprehensive as you'd probably like, but I'm trying to cover as much as I can and still give you a window of opportunity for questions and comments, and, um, you really are making a difference. So, um, this, the slide is labeled Key Topics, but it really should be founding principles upon which your homeless services is, is, um, the foundation. And that's a, a firm history of serving people with, um, who are unhoused, um, a collective interest in securing funding, a collaborative and leadership style that makes it conducive to a regional approach, and also proves the leadership that this city has done in forging its way to get funding and institute new programs, and innovation. We're constantly looking at the next available option. And I think that the staff that will remain and continue to work in your homeless services, um, area are all committed to these founding principles. So a little bit of funding, um, this shows a lot. I started with the city in October of twenty twenty, and when I came into the city, that was COVID funding became a primary funder of your homeless services. Prior to that, and you'll see in fiscal year nineteen twenty, the city received about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year to serve its unhoused population. COVID created a huge opportunity to get people into shelters in non-congregate ways to protect everybody's health and safety. And so in the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, you saw a rapid influx of funding from the federal and state government. And it wasn't without complication, it was very complicated, it was very regulated, it was limited, and that has really prevailed throughout the entire homeless funding. So when you see a lot of money coming into the jurisdiction, it really hides the fact that there is so much complexity attached to this. There are only certain uses for some of the funding, only certain jurisdictions can get some of the funding, and so it is a very complicated pie. So what your city staff have done is sought everything they could get their hands on through partnership, through innovation, and through aggressive applications to grants. And so what you've seen is a fluctuating level of, um, investment and attainment of funding that's in the tens of millions of dollars. Some of these are for hard, um, investments, and a lot of them are for straightforward services that are very, very expensive. So this is just an example of some of the various funding sources. These are both federal and state funding sources. Um, you know, the typical ones that the city has, um, always enjoyed are the Housing and Urban Development, the U.S. Housing and Urban Development Department's funding, which are your Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG, your CDBG, your Community Development Block Grant funding. And also you have Home Investment Partnership Funding, which is your key affordable housing development funding. All of the others are discretionary in some way, shape, or form, and they are either attached to the state's, um, coffers or your federal government. So we're gonna go into kind of a pictorial presentation at this point, giving you some visual references. And, um, primary to your out, to your efforts in Salinas is your Salinas Outreach and Response Team, often known as SORT. And SORT is really your boots on the ground, this is your backbone of what you're doing in homeless services, it is where you are today, and it continues to expand. Um, it's also a very unfunded, it's, it's precariously funded. And so we seek different opportunities to bring in funding to keep that staff onboard and out in the community, engaging people and trying to place them in shelters and permanent housing opportunities as much as we can. Next are the Health and Safety Days, um, often referred to as cleanups. The city has done its best to do a respectful, um, actions in places that are often questionable in terms of health and safety. And it often revolves around unhoused individuals. You can see the pictures along the tracks, the, um, the Rodeo Grounds Park, the, um, picture of Solid Edge Street, and it, it truly is a representation of what has and can eventually come back if you don't continue to invest. And, um, but Health and Safety Days, the city has specific requirements that we follow in terms of noticing. We try to resource it with staff, outreach staff, um, in a very safe way. We try to leverage our partnerships with both Public Works and Code Enforcement and, um, the Police Department as much as possible. And then there are external partners like, uh, the Union Pacific and Caltrans, where you often see other encampments. It's a very mobile, um, community. So as part of the effort in terms of homeless services, the city has sought, um, several different grant opportunities, and we've been fortunate enough to receive two encampment resolution grants from the state. And those grants had very specific purposes. The first round of funding was to deal with the Nativagret, Nativadet Creek Park area and the soccer field area, the waterways that were over off of Laurel Drive. And, um, that first grant came with funding attached to it that was also for restoration of the park. And so we had a very successful, um, uh, program there that included a variety of outreach services, pathways to vouchers and to permanent housing, also to interim housing and shelter operations and support services such as immigration services, substance abuse, mental health, you name it, it was a very comprehensive picture. The second round was recently awarded, and that is to deal with an adjacent area that borders Acosta Plaza and the County Yard Facility, and that's the Upper Car Lake Facility. For many who know the area, it was very inundated, there were people even living on the water and in the island. And, um, with the most recent, um, grant, we followed suit with the state with a similar action program, including funding for an emergency motel program that didn't exist prior. And it should be mentioned that in each of these areas, the SORT team did an extensive demographic survey. So as part of a grant application, you're often trying to educate your funders and tell them what's going on and how it's being done. And we needed to know just how many people were there, whether they were families, whether they were singles, whether they were U.S. citizens or not. And so that was all attributed to your Street Outreach and Response Team in, in making those connections, developing those relationships, so that when the funding does come in, people are willing to consider options and to move. Another endeavor that the city participates in is the Regional Point in Time Count, and this just recently occurred on January thirty-first. This is, um, something that every continuum of care in the state does, and the continuum of care that this city belongs to is a regional continuum of care that includes both San Benito and Monterey County. It's a very large group, and it is a concerted effort to get volunteers in the early morning hours to go out and count unhoused people wherever you think they may be and wherever you think you know they are, to count them, because this count sets your funding. This, this is what often guides your allocations and, and sets you apart in terms of your results and where you're going with your endeavors. So this year's Point in Time Count has yet to be finalized, but we did receive some preliminary indications that your count is probably going up. And that's a combination of both unhoused people and people who are residing in shelters at the same time. And we're seeing that across the board in a lot of places. But you should look forward to seeing that count finalized and then pursuing that in your discussions and funding endeavors in the future. So in terms of shelter, the city's done a pretty good job of investing money in its shelter operations. They've done it through partnership, and they've done it sole source funding. The Share Center is a county-city partnership on county land where the city and the county, um, jointly fund the annual operations. It is a one-hundred-person, two-year-old shelter. It is, um, has a waitlist that hovers around four hundred on any given night, and it is, um, a showplace to a certain extent. It looks like you would want your shelter to look like, it has the services, it has a lot of things. But anybody who's worked in these areas knows that there's always problems, and there's always unexpected, um, events. And so, um, we feel that this is, um, this has really been of assistance to the, not only the continuum of care, but both the city and the county in terms of resolving, because what this center does is it provides navigation services, and it, it provides access to what is known as rapid rehousing funding, and things such as down payments and, or, um, deposits and security deposits, et cetera. Home goods for people who don't have sheets or towels or pots or pans when they need them. So that's what these shelters do. Your Chinatown Navigation Center is located in the Chinatown area, and it's a leased building, the city has a ten-year lease on this building. And the city's gone so far as to erect this structure to the right, which is a sprung structure which provides for up to forty-five to fifty beds of congregate shelter options. It provides, um, restrooms to the, to the general Chinatown area as well, and currently the city is undertaking a significant renovation project to bring the restrooms into ADA compliance as well as up to standard for the amount of use that it receives, and exploring some other options that could potentially come, such as some, um, pallet home units that may take the place of these RVs, which are now sort of living their life and will need to be removed. But, um, these are projects that are definitely underway. In addition to the city-funded services, you do have other shelters, Victory Mission, you had Dorothy's. Everybody is feeling their ups and downs at this point, um, but that is the network within the City of Salinas in terms of shelter. The emergency motel program is probably the city's newest endeavor into shelter, and it's probably the, um, most effective in my mind, because this is the immediate pathway. People, this is a, a forty-two-unit motel that the city has leased, um, primarily with grants that were obtained, um, by city staff specifically for this. were obtained by city staff specifically for this, and it basically serves as another shelter, but it is operated under a housing-first platform. People are allowed to come in and bring their animals and live there, but there are some expectations. We would like you to start gathering the documents that you need to get to housing. We would like you to start dealing with some of the, maybe the mental health and substance abuse issues that you have going. And so, but we try to do that in the most welcoming way, but this shelter has been at capacity since it was implemented. And it is actually the end result of a prior partnership that happened between the Coalition of Homeless Services Providers, the County of Monterey, and the City of Salinas, which was known as Project Room Key, and then evolved into the city's motel program. So occasionally, we have received buckets of money from the county to support this, but primarily this is funded directly by the city. And the lease alone for this motel hovers around $2 million a year. Next is permanent supportive housing. So in order to house people who are unhoused, you need places for them to go, and you need services for them to feel that they can accomplish and be safe and secure where they are. And so the city has gone through a number of different programs and funding sources to help with this. Permanent supportive housing is much more than just putting somebody in a unit. It is providing after-care case management and access and check-ins, so that you make sure that that person who hasn't been housed for a while is not leaving their gas on their stove, or breaking windows, or having some other incident that comes up that might displace them from the housing that they've just obtained. So on the far left are the Home Key Projects, and these three units will, online, once they come online, will have 202 units of permanent supportive housing. The middle column is through a state grant, the Family Homeless Grant. The city attained $2.6 million in housing for affordable housing and is now purchasing homes to pull some of the parties, the families, that are on the Share Center waitlist into homes as soon as possible, with the considerations that potentially accessory dwelling units might be placed in the backyards and that other things can be developed with this. There's junior ADUs that could happen in the garages as well. And then on the far right, the city does use its Housing Successor Agency funding and its HUD entitlement funding to support affordable housing of the permanent supportive kind, and that's an example of an investment in Interim's recent project on the far right, the Sun Rose Apartments. So in addition to homelessness, you know, fair housing and community supports are key to preventing homelessness and also mediating it a little bit. And so we thought it would be appropriate to just remind everybody that the city has had a very robust platform in trying to prevent homelessness. The Emergency Rent and Utility Assistance Program, that was $15 million worth of assistance that was distributed by the Community Development Department staff throughout the community. We have entered into a housing stabilization program partnership with the Housing Authority of the County of Monterey. We have implemented recently a rental registration program, which is strictly at this point registration of units, so that we could get a better idea of what the city's stock of rental opportunities are. We do an annual fair housing audit through a contracted vendor to where they go out and see what it's like to rent or to pursue a rental in the city, and whether you're being treated fairly by a landlord, being considered in the right way. And then we're also moving towards the implementation of an agreement with the Monterey College of Law to provide additional legal assistance and mediation services to individuals that might be impacted. So this is, these next couple of slides are just a very visual of all the community partners that are working with your city on a regular basis. Some of these are strictly just partners, and others are partners with funding. And so, but it is a significant group, and collectively, you know, it may not always feel like it, but you are making a huge difference. And then there's a few alternatives for you to think about for in the future, and these involve sanctioned encampments, safe parking programs, and tiny homes. I would also, following this slide, I'll also point towards some things that may come across your conversations in the future. But to touch on these a little bit, sanctioned encampments, they're a tricky topic. They're very expensive. They carry their own health and safety complications. It is a fine line. We were initially going to come several months ago to council and present a presentation on sanctioned encampments, and staff did quite a bit of research on other jurisdictions within the state of California, and keying in on Sacramento, San Francisco, Santa Cruz, and San Jose. And the gamut of cost and the types of programs that were offered were very interesting. They ranged from $250,000 to $7.6 million. They were either governed by the city, or they were governed by the encampment, or joint arrangements. They either consisted of pallet homes, or temporary structures, or tents, but they all, and they, some involved more of a service model with available services that were brought to them, and some offered restrooms or water stations, et cetera, and some simply just offered a lot. So there is a lot of considerations that need to come in when you're considering a sanctioned encampment, and most likely of those are where and how you would bring in what you intend to bring in. So what is the capacity of your sanctioned encampment? Do you have access to infrastructure and resources? These are not things that you just designate a plot of land and walk away. These are things that you will be dealing with in perpetuity for quite some time. And so it's very important to consider that when you're talking about the complexities of neighborhoods and proximities to schools and other things that people typically aren't very happy about. And so it's sometimes easier said than done, that all you need is a piece of property. And I'm here to tell you, it's not quite that simple. It really does require thorough consideration and a thorough plan for multiple years of funding. It's multiple years. And I would estimate that you would fall somewhere in the range of a $3 to $4 million a year endeavor. So aside from that, there are safe parking programs, and the city has explored that as well. And safe parking is probably a reasonable, a reasonable safe place, but it doesn't take people out of their cars. They are in their cars. You may or may not be providing them access to showers, or restrooms, or food, or anything. Safe parking is often a mix. It could just be a gated parking lot. You can come in at this time, you have to leave at this time, and there's not much more. They often have rules, so if you have children with you, you know, you're in your car. You're often, you know, there are a lot of considerations to safe parking. Again, it's not just put people on a lot, and with this, you typically have security costs, you have infrastructure costs and other needs. But in regard to safe parking, the city does have some resources. We have a mobile shower trailer. We have partnerships with the county potentially for some of those things. You really do need to have an operator. You need an entity or an organization that is willing to host and sort of be the gatekeeper and the operator of it. It's not necessarily something that you can do with city staff. And then the other option here are tiny homes, and tiny homes have great promise. We, from the time I've started with your city, I was, we've been eyeing a property that we thought would make a great location for tiny homes. I don't know that that property is ever going to become the spot, but I would encourage you to continue to look for these opportunities and continue to talk to your development community about hybridization of these types of units. Again, some of these units require more infrastructure than others. I've had the opportunity to visit a few of these. The one you had a speaker earlier from pallet homes, I visited that near the Santa Clara County Building, and it was quite impressive, but it was quite accessible to a lot of things. They had no problem getting their connectivity for electricity or for any of the other stuff, and that is often the most complex piece. Often in development in general, you're waiting for PG&E. You're waiting for things like that, and it just doesn't happen as quickly as you'd like it to happen. And then what happens in the interim is costs go up, and so you're constantly playing this sort of chess game and looking for the best opportunity to serve the most in the best way. But tiny homes are definitely an option that I think Salinas is poised to consider, but you would need to find the right location with the right accessibility and lineup. There are definitely organizations and companies that can come in and consult and provide further details on these. And then just before we go to questions and comments, there's a couple of things that didn't quite make to the slide presentation, but I'd like to point out that you have some initiatives coming before you probably in the next few years that you need to be on the lookout for, and that would be Care Court. So Care Court is something that is gurgling up from the state level, and this is Governor Newsom looking to assist people with mental health issues or substance abuse issues that are, for whatever reason, not seeking the treatment, not heeding the advice, not, they're just not partaking. And he's looking to somehow engage them in a process that gets them the assistance they need. I don't know exactly what that is at this point. That's the pieces that need to be looked at clearly. Another thing that is coming forward is a crisis team, and you've done a pilot with Monterey County Behavioral Health, and it's a start, but it is by no means sufficient. You need a comprehensive crisis team that has a combination of medical staff, potentially law enforcement staff, and outreach staff to collectively deal and to service. And there are different initiatives at the state level that are now requiring your 911 system interoperability, your EMS system guidelines, and your coordination between behavioral health and public safety to start to move towards these teams. And this is really, from my perspective, this is key to your community policing, to alleviate some of the workload of the police officers that are out there dealing with these incidental issues that might be better dealt with by other personnel. This is really worth exploring and potentially leading the conversation on locally, in my opinion. And I also would encourage you to be very aggressive in engaging with your county partners and counterparts. You often hear about a lot of the problems in this jurisdiction that have to do with substance abuse and mental health and other things, and their purses are much more fuller than your purses are. And they, you know, they are in control of mental health care, and you, this city deserves better mental health care. We shouldn't have to be chasing around and looking for the opportunity. We should be getting it naturally because we have the population that needs it, and we deserve it. So I would suggest that you somehow try to make those aggressive inroads with county behavioral health and potentially social services. The city has established MOUs that are very effective and have been driving Share Center and a lot of the partnerships. There's affordable housing development going in. I think the time is right, but I think coming from community leaders like yourself, engaging with other community leaders, you can make more impact than staff can do just going to meetings and trying to accomplish incremental success. So with that, that's really the crux of my presentation. I have to say, it's been... Jeez, didn't want to do this, but you should all be very proud. It has been career-changing for me to work here. And you have great staff that are going to be here and carry forward, and it's hard to do what you do, and you do it well. Just keep going, because that's the only way you're going to make a difference, and don't be afraid. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Rod. Thank you. So I will be going on to council member questions. Councilwoman Gonzalez, if you'd like to start.
Thank you, Rod, for the presentation. Remember, the logic to your world successes, you mentioned this is a statewide issue, this is a nationwide issue. It sounds like it's been overlooked over the last, it's incredibly complex. But I'm curious of the alternative solutions that you mentioned, sanctioned encampments, the safe haven parking lots, and the tiny homes. Which do you feel is the most feasible and the most looking into in the immediate future?
Well, for me, I think tiny homes are the most respectful on the long term, the most long-lasting, the most uncomplicated, but they probably could be the most expensive. But if it were me, you know, I, it's hard to work in this arena, just generally. You're dealing with unhoused people, and you're also trying to generate housing at the same time, and it's very complex and they don't overlap very well. But my, I've never seen anything wrong with the tiny home platform, other than you need space and you need funding. You need, and there are so many other complicating issues that come with both safe parking and particularly sanctioned encampments. I have seen jurisdictions be awarded grants and not be able to implement their grant because they had a sanctioned encampment, and it was stopped by court, and it really became problematic to the community moving forward. So you really need to think long and hard about people living unhoused in general. Tiny homes are not unhoused, in my opinion. Depending upon where you're going, there are different models, and there's a lot going on in tiny homes these days.
Got it. Thank you, Rod. That concludes my questions, and just thank you so much for your many years of service here. It's appreciated.
Thank you. Councilmember Barrera.
Mr. Mayor, I want to save mine for comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Sandoval.
Hi, Rod. I had a question about the Health and Safety Days as far as cleanups and noticing. Does noticing apply to all, every time that there is going to be a cleanup of any specific area? Could you touch on that?
Well, I'm by far not the expert on noticing and all of that. I would probably defer to Chris, but my understanding is there's a 14-day notice, but our staff is out there engaging with encampments daily. You know, the SORT team, which has recently expanded due to grant funding, is really known to the unhoused community in your city, no matter where they are. They really have their finger on the pulse of how many people are here and where they're going. You know, the noticing, I'm not quite sure if we did any noticing for you, P, because it's not our property. So that's the complexity here. You have highly visible areas, the underpasses, along the freeways, et cetera, and then you have little tranches of land throughout the city that are just not our jurisdiction, and we are beholden to sort of them coming in. You do have the partnership from the police department, you have homeless services there, but I think somewhat this... But I think somewhat the city gets a negative call-out for that because it's happening within the jurisdiction, but it's not necessarily the city of Salinas is doing.
How do you feel or what do you think about the capacity of the SORT team? Or are we properly staffed? Or how do you see that?
So that's a great question, because I feel like your jurisdiction is going to eventually approach a cliff of funding. You've been very, you've been served well by having a lot of money coming in, but it is, again, all grant funding. There is no block grant for homeless services. Your city's ESG allocation is going to go back down to the 180K range again. You know, it's gone down since COVID. So all the monies that are coming in are for, because your staff have aggressively pursued policies and set up structures incrementally to capitalize on it. There's a lot of leveraging that's going on. The wise choices that you've made to allocate some of the ARPA funding to homeless services was a huge impetus here. That really did a lot, both for affordable housing and for homelessness. So those are the choices that this jurisdiction is making that other jurisdictions aren't necessarily doing. And we regularly engage with adjacent regional partners and other people throughout the state are saying, how do you do it? What are you doing? And we are simply saying, we are just doing it. You know, you have to have just some forward motion. How can we leverage it in and then bring more and more and more? And, you know, the unfortunate part of homelessness is that it's really a housing shortage. It's a housing shortage, and you can't build houses fast enough. And then you, you know, so if you flip over to the development side, you're looking at profits, and you're looking at other things that make their developments really pencil out. And so you're really dealing with a lot of complex issues there. But I think that, you know, all in all, the city has, you are facing a, I mean, in an upcoming budget, not this year, but, you know, progressively down the road, you could be put in the position of realizing that your SORT staff are, were all grant-funded for many, many years, and there's no longer funding. So when I started in 2020, there were five of us. And when I'm leaving, there's about 25 people in the city that are focused on affordable housing development and homeless services. And that is a direct result of all the, you know, no other jurisdiction that I know of in the state has received all of the CalICH grant awards, Family Homeless Challenge and Encampment Resolution, Three Home Key Projects. I know those are problematic, but I'm confident that they'll get work through. I think the state is reasonable. Yes, we had an interesting development partner. But I don't think these things aren't salvageable. It takes creativity, and I think that's what you have.
Yeah, one final question. You know, under your leadership and with Lisa, we've brought millions of dollars into the city of Salinas. Is there anything else you think we could do to maximize future grants? Is there something that you see we need to fill, you know, a position or offer more support staff? Because at the end of the day, if we're going to be facing some shortage of money, we need to plan ahead. So what can we do to get more money?
Well, you have to wait for the opportunity for the money, because I think it is still going to be chasing grants. Unless you, you know, leverage your federal partners to get the block grant momentum. It's unfortunate that I think the, you know, sort of the call that there was all this money coming from the state government for homeless services and initiatives, and now we're kind of hearing a little bit of a retraction because of the state budget situation. I think that's just government up and down, and you just kind of have to stay the course. You've got a really good staffing model and homeless services platform here. This city is providing direct services. People are being served directly to go into housing by your staff. That's unusual. If, you know, in prior years, you would be contracting out and have, you know, 10% admin going and a lot of different things. So there is some savings to having your staff internal. And, you know, just having done the work of the division, which is homelessness and affordable housing, it's a lot of work. So it is very hard to shift hats and to do both things sometimes. And so there's a lot of pressure for staff in that regard. But we do have two homeless services managers that are now in place, one focusing on direct services, one focusing on a lot of the relationships and the shelters and outreach, both run by two very accomplished and experienced women that are really leading a charge. You've got historical staff in your housing division that really have lived this experience prior to me and now. So they'll be your historical, you know, context. And you've got a new energy coming in as well. These grants have invigorated your staff with new ideas, new enthusiasm, new, you know, people who really want to make a difference. And so I'd say try to maintain it. I don't know that you need to grow it unless you've got some exponential money that you, you know, that's, we've tried to be very prudent with how we've spent, you know, the city's money. And so, but I would, you know, you've got a great staff working in this area.
Thank you. Those are all my questions. I'll reserve for comment.
Councilmember Rocha?
Thank you. I really appreciate being able to work with you. My entire time on council, I've been on the Housing and Land Use Committee, and I've had the opportunity to work with you. And I just really appreciate all your passion, your expertise, and your commitment to the work that you do. You're an inspiring person to work with, and I wish you all the best in your career. My questions, the first question I have is, you mentioned the Community Development Block Grant does not fund homeless services. Is that as a, because it's not within the criteria of the CDBG grant or?
Well, actually, we're using some of our Community Development Block Grant. So we've really, we've learned the ropes a little bit and tested waters. Community Development Block Grant's a little complex because prior to my tenure, the city really did award out little pockets of funding to what is known as public services. You know, $10,000 to $50,000 grants to different public agencies. And then when COVID came in, that kind of stopped a lot of those services due to the pandemic. And after that, the city really took on what's known as a self-directed model. And we don't get a lot of money in CDBG. And you can only use a certain portion of that for a public service. And we have been putting a lot of our funding into Sherwood Recreation and Hebron and, you know, a lot of the emerging community needs, neighborhood needs. And that's the right place for them. But in this most recent year, we are now using a portion of that funding to support your street outreach and response team, because we feel like that is really making the biggest public service in this community.
Is there a limit to the amount of funding within CDBG that can go to that particular purpose?
There is. There's a percentage. I'm not, Francisco Brembilla will know that percentage, but...
15%. Thank you. You mentioned that this point in time count could potentially see an increase in our number of people who are unhoused in the city, whether that be unsheltered or even those that are in shelters. Do you attribute that to more people losing their housing in our city?
Not necessarily. It's hard to own a house in this, in this community, hard to get your foot in the door. That's why, you know, on the affordable housing side, we are trying to figure out how to implement a first-time home buyer program and provide some more of those kinds of supports. But I would attribute the rise to a more focused and concerted effort from the full regional continuum in covering all of the tracks. Weather played a very big role. There was no storm, there was no, you know, we, the count got done before that came in. And, you know, I'm not saying it's going to be a humongous change in numbers, but it does look like there is an uptick. And, you know, there could be a variety of different factors. Rents have gone up, financing has gone up, everything.
Thank you. On the discussion of tiny homes, when I first was elected to the city council, we had a discussion, I forgot who I spoke, I think it might have been Megan Hunter at the time. But one of the things that came up is with tiny homes, the amount of land that you are going to have to use to be able to put together a tiny home development to really make a significant impact, the amount of land you're going to have to use and the cost of building that, it would be more cost-effective to build a multifamily housing unit or multiple units joint to each other. Do you think that's still the case in our current economic position we're in?
So when you're looking for your sites, you always have to be attentive to zoning. I mean, you've got density on certain plots of land, you're, you know, you're going through a general plan update right now and a lot of moving parts. So that's a complication. Generally speaking, a tiny home is much cheaper to build than a development. You know, there's just a lot that goes into that permanency piece. You would, of course, want to weigh the costs and, you know, the cost benefit of that. How many years? What is the life? What could we do? Can they be repurposed? There's a lot of discussion happening, you know, particularly between the county and the city on some of these things as we go and look at grants and other things. I really think the city owes it to itself to try it. You know, it's something that you just need a good-sized lot. I'm not sure where that is, but keep your eyes out. And I think it is something that you could probably explore, and you would feel more comfortable with than a sanctioned encampment that is mostly tents and a lot of other things that somehow, because of the elements and things, may not withstand a lot of it.
Thank you. And in terms of tiny homes, in your advice to the city of what to pursue, are you thinking that we should consider pursuing tiny homes that could be used for long-term, like almost permanent supportive housing? Or you think tiny homes that would be used as a transitional housing model while we get people into permanent supportive housing?
That's a good question. I feel like you have to do something immediate. You're always better off when you're getting more people with a roof over their heads. And sometimes, you know, like I said, there are a lot of companies that produce these units, some are even local, and you can, and they're changing all the time. Some come with, you know, restrooms, some don't. You know, it's that kind of infrastructure that you really have to be mindful of, because it's one thing to just give somebody a box and say, here you go. It's another thing to say, here's where you can take a shower, here's where you can do these things, you know? And that's really when something becomes a home.
Thank you. We were awarded the Pro Housing Incentive Funds that was a little over, I think it was like 1.3 million, correct? And then we also applied for the Housing Trust Fund with matching funds to get us over $5 million for that. Are either of those two funding sources going to be used for permanent supportive housing or homeless services of any kind?
So you have another item that's coming. That is your second application to Pro Housing. But the initial round of Pro Housing was allocated for affordable housing production and a first-time home buyer program. This next allocation will come up shortly with a slightly different, you know, when you allocate money to the affordable housing development, oftentimes it gives you a little more flexibility, of which staff could certainly look at whether, you know, you could certainly buy a lot. You know, that's, that tends to be a lot of what we've been doing. We've been acquiring and trying to change neighborhoods and communities like Chinatown through that kind of acquisition. That's how you're going to make some more meaningful change, by lumping together those lots and really offering those things up where a developer will be willing to come in and say, yeah, that's great. I'll take that and produce you 70 units. That's really, but that's a multi-year thing. But in the interim, you know, there are other lots that are conducive to this. I think that the city is in position to acquire a property that could be very small-scale tiny home to start. And then maybe, you know, and it doesn't have to be permanent. You could always say, this is going to be here for 10 years, and then we want to really do something with this in this neighborhood.
In order to contextualize the position we're in in terms of being able to provide enough shelter and housing for the amount of people in our city that are identified as being unhoused, I think it's important to have those numbers. Do you know how many people in the city of Salinas, from the point in time count, are identified as unhoused?
No. I don't have the number because it's not finalized, but preliminary numbers are around the same as they were before. Little, they're probably a little higher. So one of the things that I was, I was trying to do some number review before this and saw that there was an unhoused count compared to what the SORT demographic is. So SORT is very up on who's in the encampments and stuff. And the number was over what SORT anticipated. And so to me, that indicated that this could be maybe a 5% or 10% bump. You know, just one quick mention is, I think you could also go a long way by entertaining a partnership on a family shelter. And it doesn't have to be a completely new building, because I think the share center is ripe to be the family shelter. And then you have a secondary shelter that could then be for the adult population. Anybody who's been to share will recognize immediately that you have toddlers all the way up to, you know, adults and retirees, et cetera. And it is a very complex group. The service provider at the shelter has said this is probably one of the most complicated shelter environments they've been in, because there is such a wide range of the demographic. And your services and your focus could be much more narrowed and probably more detail-oriented there.
I guess the purpose of that question is, several years ago, I recall the number, and I'm not sure if this is unhoused or directly unsheltered, as in not having a roof over the head, you know, because there's people that are living in someone's living room that's technically considered unhoused, but perhaps not unsheltered. I remember it being somewhere around 1,500 or so. And I believe we've developed, I want to say, and it's not available units, but it's units that have been created for the purpose of housing, whether it be shelter or permanent supportive housing. I want to say around 600 to 700 units. So for me, in order to contextualize it, I'm wondering, should we identify a number that is that gap that we need to work towards? Like, we need to build another 800 units, whether that be shelter or permanent supportive housing?
So the city has adopted the Coalition or the Continuum's Lead Me Home Plan. It's a data-driven plan. It does deal with looking at the number of unhoused in comparison to the number of units built, and it has some goals that are connected to it. And I suggest keeping that as your barometer of, you know, just incremental understanding. I don't know that that simple math that you just described is really going to get you there, because I think there are so many complexities that have to do with just people generally moving in and out and other pieces of COVID versus non-COVID, you know, a good economy versus bad economy. So I think that you've got a lot of moving parts here. But, you know, you, I do think that your numbers are going to be pretty consistent to what you've seen historically with little increases. You're not going to be shocked, but, you know, it's probably not the huge change that the continuum of care would have liked to see. And the complicating factor that it brings is if you go down, your funding might go down. If you go up, then you might get a little bit more. And the mites are the big deal. And so that really does complicate. You almost get a negative point for having results instead of rewarding you to continue with what has worked for your jurisdiction.
And also, I would say probably that simple math wouldn't work because, and let me know if you agree with this statement, because everyone has a different need. Some people may need temporary shelter, whereas others may need permanent supportive housing, others are, need affordable housing, but not the permanent supportive additional mental health services. So it's different need all around the spectrum of housing.
It is, you know, that's not completely inaccurate, but I think everybody has their own individual needs. I mean, you will hear people who say, I do not, I like living where I'm living, unhoused. This is all I know, this is, I'm good with this. And then there are other... And then there are others that are just, it's just their last ditch effort, you know, that's, they don't have anything else. And so I think you're always dealing with this broad spectrum of trying to serve. You can't, and, and that's the complexity that unfortunately you guys have to make choices on, which is how do we serve so many different people in so many different ways? Because that's what you're tasked with. And that's, you know, that's the magic pill, if anybody knows what it is. You know, that's really what's gonna help.
Yeah. Those are my questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Rocha. And, and I only have one question, and my question would be, as it relates to safe parking, I know that I've, I've brought the, the question up, but is there, has there been any locations that have been identified for safe parking lots? And, yeah.
We did have a prospective partnership identified with the Salvation Army at the very northern end of town. It, it blossomed into costs and resources. Like, what would it look like for people to be there? And for, it just, in the end, I think it didn't pan out because we couldn't envision bringing in all those resources at that time. But that, that was a gated lot. We weren't quite sure where they were gonna have access to the inside or not. They do do some programming there. We weren't sure if that was going to be included. But what came, what increased the cost was the actual service provider part of it. So it wasn't just about providing portable restrooms or washing stations, or are you gonna bring in food? There were also rules about you have to leave at a certain hour in the morning, at a certain time at night, everybody's gotta get in the car. It just seemed a little restrictive, especially if you have children. And that one was going to be a family-oriented safe parking endeavor. And so I think that there is a real need to look at family programming in your homeless services area, but it is, there, there are options there. You just need the right mixture of, of what it is and, and a funding source.
Okay. And thank you for, for the, for the response. The reason I ask is because as we look at Goodnight Inn and, you know, obviously having capacity for more, but you know, while things are kind of getting worked out, I think that there's a certain percentage of rooms that are actually available there. I always look at that parking lot and I think the, the services are, are there on site already. Just, I always, I know it's probably easier than to bring it up, but I always see that as a potential maybe opportunity because the services are already provided there.
The developer was actually, that was a key piece of that property for them, was the potential to potentially develop the lot. But you do need to be mindful that that is a business center, that whole street. There is, there are CCNRs there and it took quite a bit of work to get that development there in that particular spot. So, you know, that, that's that neighborhood, is that the right place? And then also when you're looking at using your federal dollars and things, you also have to be careful of location. So there's that reclamation ditch that sits there, it's very close to the freeway, so then you're getting into elements of housing, like, is it too noisy, is there pollution, is there water, you know? So, but yes.
Okay. Thank, thank you for that. And now we're gonna go out to the public. So any public comment on this item, please step forward. Hello, welcome.
Good evening, Hal. Name is Eric Peterson. Couple weeks ago, I heard a really interesting interview of Gavin Newsom, and it should be archived for what it's worth on kqed.org. Newsom pointed out that the state of California was completely out of homeless until the last year of the Brown administration. Today is election day. Hopefully, everybody voted for Proposition 1, which will really shake up the state of California attitude on homeless, getting, with a focus on getting services to people. It's been a while since we've talked about Connor. Connor, paranoid schizophrenic alcoholic homeless, lives in Salinas occasionally when he's in jail. And his mother likes it when he's in jail because it's the only time he gets services. This guy's been on the streets all his adult life. If we can implement Proposition 1 correctly, we will be doing just all sorts of things towards treating human beings like human beings and helping those like Connor who can't function correctly in society. And hopefully that'll work out. Also, as some of you know, I spend time in Old Town pretty frequently. And I've never noticed human defecation there. I could've missed it. But if it were to be a problem, there's a message there. And the message there is public restrooms of one sort or another. We can do them temporary or we can do them permanently and maybe that'll increase the tourist interest in, in Salinas. And one last quick comment, hopefully we won't hook up to PG&E, we'll hook up to CCE. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor Protem. Just want to extend appreciation and gratitude for all the work. I guess as a resident, we didn't understand, I guess for just me personally, to see how the disaster that COVID brought in, all that funding, all that support, you know, sitting, listening, hearing, watching. There is a part of me that's a little, just, just a little worried about what it, what that funding will look like, that support, if it just disappears, or if our city can be prepared for what happens when, when this time runs out, right? But really appreciative of, of what you were able to point out, especially around the relationship between city and, and the county. As residents of the city and as residents of the county, a lot of times, my neighbors don't know the difference, you know? And, and we don't know that, you know, hey, maybe if we could show up to the county supervisor meetings, you know, on behalf of, you know, the conditions of our city, to better, just better, basically better understand how and where, you know, the potential support and I guess a tighter collabora, well, collaboration between our city and our county can be very effective. And around the numbers of what determines, you know, unhoused versus unsheltered, you know, I, I think that math, those numbers are, are something that if, you know, if our, if our city can be able to put that data down, you know, in partnership with our county, I think it would help us see the picture a little more clearly. So thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
Mayor Protem, members of the council, it was a good presentation. I know a lot of effort's been put into this. I think what we need is a temporary solution, not, I don't wanna see these partial encampments either. But I was thinking, and when, when COVID took place, tents went up all over the place and it was mostly for medical facilities. There's one out in Fort Ord right now, I think Joby Aviation's using it, huge tent. And if you had two tents, one for females, one for males, and these would not be the families, but these would be the individuals who are on the street, you could at least take these people off of Chinatown and those poor people from the Buddhist group, I, I feel real bad for them. That, that whole area's just been torn up. The one area I was thinking about is the area between Sherwood and Highway and, and 101. There's quite a bit of land out in there, some of it's farmed, some of it's PG&E, a lot of PG&E, there's a big irrigation canal that goes down in between it. But that land has really never been used for much. And it seems to me it would be a, a good place if you could rent the land for a short term or, you know, a few years, three, four years, whatever time it takes to develop tiny homes or, or other better long-term solutions. That would at least get us, get these people off the streets and, and help us. And I, and the other thing I would like to see is the county of Monterey should be kicking in because a lot of these people are, are county residents that end up in Salinas because that's where the services are. And, and I, I always thought Fort Ord would have been the perfect area, but they've turned it into two new cities, so I don't know how much you're gonna get in Fort Ord anymore. But I just wanna throw a couple of comments out. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to make a public comment?
I agree wholeheartedly. Hi, I'm back. I agree wholeheartedly because during the time of COVID, that's exactly what my family did part-time, we would ensure that, I don't know if you guys can see, that there were makeshift tents and we would provide food, clothes, hygiene products. So I am living proof that that temporary solution until we can finish the tiny homes, because that's exactly what we wanted to do as a church, try to implement tiny homes as the next step. But sadly, like another member was saying before earlier in the meeting, sadly, the city swoops up people and scoops them up and removes them from the area temporarily and then they're just moved from place to place to place and if there's no consistency. So with these ideas of temporary camps, tent cities, something that can be found on some land that's not being used for the unhoused members, give them food, hygiene products, things that they need, until the tiny homes and RVs are finished, that would be amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that has any public comment? And city clerk, anybody on Zoom?
Yes, we have a few. Wes White, two minutes.
Hello, Wes White, it's Lees Monterey County Homeless Union. You know, actually, yes, shelter in place was actually the best time, little Renaissance area where services were provided and people were allowed to be. Gotta realize, these are the most, very most extremely poor people in, in our city. They've been lifelong residents. I know many of them and I've seen quite a few of them die outside waiting for services. You know, the day California reopened, that's when we really took a wrong turn and, and we made it about other people making money instead of giving the money directly to people. So, I mean, this is affordable housing, it's what people can afford, it's what they have currently until a city comes and takes it away. UP pushed everybody into private property and the city was right there with a bulldozer to take everybody's possessions. You can go, but I'm taking everything you got. And that's been our whole attitude the whole time. We've done open discrimination our whole entire existence, manifest destiny, and these poor people, they, they just gotta go. They may as well be illegals. Can't we just shoot them on sight? That's, that's just really the heart of the issue of the problem and it comes even from within the administration. So if, if, if your servants aren't willing to do what you're trying to will them, then of course it's not gonna happen, they're gonna tell you it's not possible. Sanction encampments in, in Sacramento, camp resolution, they actually started with a paraplegic lady that was getting pushed into the riverbed and out of the riverbed and a set of folks that had to help her get her bed out of there and into there every single time and they said, no more. And so they stayed on city property until, until they got a lease and they were able to obtain those RV trailers that were in COVID that were meant to go to people and they actually did go to people because we demanded it. And this problem that needs to actually start better and you folks need to actually turn the, turn the ship, dude, this barge needs to turn. We need to stop the sweeps, support people where they're at, running water, electricity, and allow them just tenting ground, no blanket of trash. And if we, if we put that in writing, people would adhere to it and then they'd be housing ready.
Thank you, Wes.
Thank you, Wes.
Kevin Dayton, two minutes.
Kevin Dayton, Government Affairs for Salinas Valley Chamber of Commerce and Salinas City Center Improvement Association. First, I wanted to say, people in the city and county who handle issues of homelessness, they tend to be humble and I've created a table for myself that I've put in things like the Salinas Valley Chamber of Commerce Business Journal that actually shows progress over the past several years in finding homes for unsheltered people and people in temporary shelter. And this comes from the Monterey County Biennial Point in Time Homeless Census and Survey for the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. And I think one of the council members asked about this. In January 2017, in Monterey County, there were 2,113 unsheltered people and 724 temporary sheltered people. And then five years later, the numbers had decreased about 30%. Now, I heard Mr. Powell mention that the numbers might be up a little bit, considering the performances in other counties in California. Actually, Monterey County is doing pretty well and the city of Salinas and the county of Monterey cooperating has made a big difference in that. So you should look at the positive side of this sort of thing. Regarding the tiny homes, I know what's being talked about there because this first came up at a June 16th, 2020 meeting, the Housing and Land Use Committee meeting. It's called Hope Village at 1 Preston Street, and I'm assuming that's what Mr. Powell was talking about. If you're interested in tiny homes, you should have an item on a future city council agenda to discuss it. Same thing with the unsanctioned encampments. I've been trying to track the tiny homes, but the truth is it comes up very irregularly. There was a mention of it at one of the Housing Element Annual Progress Reports last year. But if you're interested in that topic, you should look at it more thoroughly. They're looking at that with the Veterans Transition Center in Marina and Rancho Cielo actually has a construction program, they wanted a word.
Thank you, Mr. Dayton.
Thank you, Mr. Dayton.
Dwight, two minutes.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for the presentation. The city or the state of California has spent over 17.5 billion on homelessness in the past five years and it, the homeless rate is still going up. I just did a quick Google search and there's 1,060 homeless in Salinas and 800 unhoused. I don't think we should just be looking at government to solve our issues, we should be looking at our community to solve, help solve these issues because government is inept and the wastefulness of the spending is clearly seen with 17.5 billion spent and we still have homeless and homeless people on the streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
No more public comment.
Thank you, city clerk. And we'll go back to council members. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you again, Rod, for the presentation. You know, I, I think that this is always gonna merit a robust discussion and, and again, I, I really don't believe that this is an issue that's going away tomorrow or even the day after. It's gonna require proactive action and longstanding action at that. I'm happy to see that progress is being made. I'm very much in support of looking into tiny homes. I know that that's been a success in certain areas around LA County and around Santa Rosa, I believe was the last that I looked into. I also want us to start thinking about the gap that will be created once the rest of ARPA funding and COVID funding goes away. There's gonna need to be a plan of action that we implement to really address the lack of funding because I, I don't want that to be something that we deal with in that moment. And would also echo support from what community, community members brought up around temporary solutions and having tents that are available. You mentioned that we have right the, the mobile shower access and that we can, I really believe that those are tools that we can employ in the interim as we work on more substantive and more permanent solutions. Thank you.
Councilmember Barrera?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City clerk, I'm gonna ask you while I'm giving my comments, if you could do the last slide, questions and comments. I wanna focus, Mr. Powell, it's been a pleasure having you here at the city. I, I just wanna echo some of the things that you presented. You, you are leaving a legacy of service and not only that, but look at the training that you, you're leaving with us. You, you mentioned professionals, enthusiastic, visionary. I mean, we are going forward. You know, today we listen to a lot of the people that we serve here today, pros and cons, good and bad, different thoughts, different ideas. Some of them even want some of us to off this because we're not doing anything, but we're going forward. And regardless who's up here, we're gonna continue with these issues. You know, you brought up something that's, I think it's powerful. We need to be aggressive in our relationship with Monterey County. We're, we're dealing, and, and you know what, to the people, the staff that go out there almost on a daily basis, talk to some of these folks. I've known some of these folks for many years on a daily basis as well. And you know what, drug addiction is turning into mental health issues as well because of all the chemicals. of all the chemicals in these drugs. And you mentioned, some of these folks just wanna be left alone. The problem is, long-term, it creates a health hazard, and we can't just let it be there. You know, this last cleanup, I was there personally, not necessarily to kick people out or ruin people's lives, but you would see hundreds of rats, not mice, but rats. I mean, as soon as the movement started, rats started running everywhere, hundreds of them. And you know, some of these folks were saying, you know what, I really don't want help, I wanna be just left alone. And to look for ways of how to be able to respect them and figure out a place where they can be left alone, that's another issue. But you know what, in the history of the five years you've been with us, $66 million, $880,000, just on this presentation, the history of your funding. And to your credit and the staff and Ms. Brenton, you know, we also got Big Sur lanterns. Today, we heard we're getting a new park, it's called Enson Community Park. Those are not easy, that's millions of dollars projects. And you know, to the people that we serve and feel that we're not doing nothing, and you're right, sometimes it feels like we're not even making a dent. I feel like that sometimes. But we've done a lot of progress. I've seen people go into homes. Can you imagine a child running into an apartment and say, I'm having my own bedroom? That is beautiful, I witnessed that. And yes, it may be one family, but it's one family and then another family. And you know, we created the Share Center with this council and through your staff, the Chinatown Navigation Center. And to some of the people that says we don't do anything, the emergency motel program, these aren't easy projects. You're dealing with human beings, the permanent supportive housing. There's actually people that have moved into affordable housing, nice homes. Thank you to you and the service of your staff, emergency rental assistance, nothing easy, and the many, many partnerships that we've had. Mr. Powell, I think we're gonna miss you. And man, if we could give you, I don't know, if you want more money, talk to the city manager, but you know what, it'd be awesome to have you here. But, Mr. Powell, I wish you the best. I know you're going to Hollister, Assistant City Manager, but you are leaving a legacy of service, and I wanna thank you for your good work. And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, and I'm going out of order here, but can we just give him a round of applause for all his great work, please? Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yeah, Rod, I wanna thank you for your intentional efforts to make Salinas a better place for a lot of people. I mean, your knowledge is so in-depth, your passion for what you do is obvious, so Hollister's lucky to have you. I thought initially, when Lisa said this will be his last presentation, I was thinking, how long can we make this presentation last? Maybe we'll keep him for a little longer. But that's how my mind thinks, right? I'll say, we'll continue the presentation for next year. But, you know, I do remember that there was a request from Councilmember Barrera and I for a sanctioned encampment, and I understand there's a lot of different ways it could go, a lot of different costs. But I'd like to see that, you know, as one of our tools come forward to council, and perhaps, I'm thinking of our strategic planning session we had in January of last year, I believe, where we proposed an unhoused committee made up of community leaders, maybe the business community, some unhoused folks, the council, the faith community, to keep, you know, bring different perspectives. Because I am concerned, it does feel at times, actually feels like it very often, that although we're making substantial progress, it feels like we're going in circles. You know, it hurts to see people come and say they threw my stuff away, and people don't wanna hear that that's not our jurisdiction or the underpass, they don't wanna hear that, they just wanna know what's gonna be done. So I support the move of tiny homes, like you said. I think it's something that's feasible and could be done soon. I didn't realize, or I didn't understand that, you know, maybe on a temporary basis, we could do that and maybe move them in the future, but I think we can do something now with tiny homes. I had an opportunity to tour the Share Center when I first got elected, and I spoke with Mr. Armenta at the time, and he also showed interest in possibly partnering for a safe parking place behind the Share Center. So, you know, to our staff, that's a possible connection. I like the idea of the Share Center becoming a family shelter, and then maybe the safe parking as well. I know that there are some RVs, I think you mentioned, that are, they're gone. They've outlived their usefulness that we bought during COVID, and they're in desperate need of repair, and maybe tiny homes is a feasible alternative to replace those, because, you know, the representative we had from the pellet homes, I think their cost was like $20,000 or $30,000 per unit, so that may be something we may look at. I'd also like to say that in one of your slides, there was a picture of Mr. Gregory Gordon. Now, I don't know if the council remembers Mr. Gordon, but he came to the council for several council meetings, and I wanna appreciate your staff, because not only did they ultimately find him housing, which I'm excited about, I know he is, but they helped him navigate some things that you wouldn't think our city staff would do. But there were some things in his past that were preventing him from participating in that program, and our city staff, I don't know what state it was, I don't, maybe you remember, it was like Wisconsin or something, something from 1985, and they helped them clear it up. So, you know, I appreciate the work of your homeless outreach staff and all the good work they're doing. And we can't just keep throwing people's stuff away and then moving them here and moving them there. It just doesn't make any sense. I hear people ask to be treated with kindness. I mean, they're our fellow neighbors, our residents. So I'm proposing to the council that we do create that unhoused committee, and maybe quarterly or whatever that looks like, that we need to try to monitor some of the progress on some of these things. Otherwise, we're gonna be stuck in an endless loop, and we're not serving the community that way. So, thank you, Rod, for all you've done for our city. I wish you luck, and I wish you will come back, but, you know, who knows, time will tell. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I wanna reiterate my appreciation for all the work that you did, transformational work for our community, and it was a lot of your leadership that is why Salinas is known as a leader on so many issues. And so I really appreciate your commitment to the things you tackled, because it's one thing to just touch on an issue, it's another thing to really delve deep into the policy of it and create a program that can sustain itself. And not only have you done that, but you've also trained the people in the department to be able to continue the work that you're doing, which speaks to your leadership. So thank you for that. Some thoughts on this presentation, I really like all the work that we're doing, I like the direction we're going in. I think one thing we should be keeping in our minds as we're discussing the issue of homelessness, it's prevention of homelessness. And I think that that's possible through affordable rents and also through keeping people housed through tenant protections. And I think that we have made steps to have those discussions here at the council, but ultimately, we can spend millions and millions of dollars on this issue, and it's only gonna continue to get worse if people are losing their housing and can't stay housed. And ultimately, as we're facing various financial shortfalls from the state of California, which has been our primary funder for a lot of these programs, we really have to look at ways to address this locally without having to rely so much on state funding, and I think, you know, addressing the issue of rents and tenant protections is a core component of that. I would support the efforts to really provide a diversity of housing options available to people at all spectrums of the need for housing. Some people need shelter, other people need permanent supportive housing, other people need affordable housing without the clinical services. So making sure we have a plethora of options available is, I think, critical to truly getting people housed and keeping people housed. I support moving forward the tiny homes option, because I think right now, what I'm seeing is, we're spending a lot of money on permanent supportive housing programs, which is important, but that's more of a long-term solution. And right now, we need people to have shelter immediately. I think the longer people remain in a position of being critically unhoused and without shelter for an extended period of time really limits our ability to effectively place them into housing and keep them housed, because of the challenges that arise from being unsheltered for such a long period of time. So providing immediate shelter is critical for our community, and I think tiny homes can accomplish that. I would support looking into the unhoused committee for the city of Salinas. I think it's really important that the community that we are trying to serve is a part of the discussions on creating the policies and programs to most effectively address their needs. And I think that creates a level of trust and shared understanding of the issues impacting the community from a firsthand perspective that potentially could be lacking now. And I say potentially because I don't know exactly the day-to-day work of the homeless services managers, so I'm not gonna speak to whether or not, from my viewpoint, that perspective is missing, because they're out there on the day-to-day front lines doing the work, I'm not. And I would also share my concern as well with the way the cleanups are happening, and just really to point out that I wanna make sure we're not moving people around and having people lose their stuff, if we can do whatever we need to do preventatively to make sure that the encampments do not result to being in such a place to where it requires essentially heavy equipment to do the cleaning. If we could perhaps provide trash bins to help the residents of the encampment keep the encampment clean, maybe that's when we'd go about it, if we don't have somewhere for them to go as opposed to continuously moving them. Because ultimately, I don't know that the encampment itself is what's causing the problem as much as the trash that's accumulated around the encampment that is leading to health and safety issues. And if we can mitigate that, I think it'd be in everyone's interest. Those are all of my comments. Thank you for all of your work.
Thank you, Councilmember Rocha. And definitely, I've also been serving on the Housing and Land Use Committee, and it's great to be able to work with you in that capacity. You know, I'm so honored that we got a chance to just work with such a great team. You know, you think about even the city manager in Solidad, you know, Megan Hunter, and all of the things she did for the department. And we have Lisa Britton right now that is doing a tremendous job in the department as well. And to see you become an Assistant City Manager, I mean, it's bittersweet, right? You know what I mean? You wanna have all of the talent in Salinas. But I think it really speaks to the fact that, you know, unfortunately, there's folks that feel like there's this type of, this leadership void, and I would beg to differ. We have lots of great leaders that are in our departments, but you guys have a great opportunity to advance your careers and to continue to do the great work that you have done in Salinas in other cities. And we should be proud of that. And so I just obviously wanna say thank you for allowing for us to get a chance to work with you. And then going back to the slide that Councilmember Barrera brought up, I mean, I always say that the future is bright here in Salinas. We got a lot of young professionals that are enthusiastic, you know, think outside of the box. I mean, I know that when my time's up on this council, I will know that we have some professionals that are really looking for the best interests of Salinas, and I'm proud of that. So again, thank you for all the time you've been here. The only comments that I have are gonna be just in relation to the funding that we've gotten, and really recognizing that, that, you know, over $65 million has come in in the time 2020 till now. Also, I think it's great that you point out the partnerships, not only with the service providers, but also with other elected officials throughout the county. I think that there are some relationships that we keep with other elected officials, and that's probably what's made it a little easier to go out to them, and, you know, when you talk about these similar issues that the county's facing, but really having a proactive approach and collaborating with them. So I'm so glad that you pointed that out. And also, I know that it's very challenging when you're talking about encampments, because alone in my district, District 4, when I was first elected in 2020, there were six encampments in my district. You know, there was the Circle Drive, there was Sherwood Hall, the whole entire Sherwood Hall, or the Sherwood Park was an encampment there. And then there was Car Lake, you know, and Canstantini, you know, on Bridge Street behind the railroad tracks. There was a lot of encampments in that district, and I know that little by little, the work in being able to help with the SORT team, being able to get them connected with services and go to some of these shelters, thinking about the Steinbeck Lodge and things like that as well. I just, I really can't say enough about the really great work that the department has been able to accomplish, and I wanted to start there and recognize that. We have lots of work to do, but I'm confident that with the team that we have, and again, just thank you to the entire department. Those are my comments. Thank you. And so, no action required, this was a presentation, so thank you for that again. Next up, we have a public hearing, 20-77, Second Amendment to the Planned Unit Development Permit 1969-003, PUD 2023-001, located at Las Casitas, Unit 1 and 2, 607 and 615 pursuant to residential low-density RL 5-5 zoning district development standards. And we're gonna be receiving a report from Tom Wiles, Senior Planner.
Thank you, Commissioner Mayor Protemo Sonio, councilmembers. The proposal is a Second Amendment to Planning and Development Permit 1969-03, it's Planning and Development Permit 2023-01 is the actual application, is to allow residential additions for 124 existing single-family detached dwelling units that are located in Las Casitas tract units, 1 and 2 tract, 607 and 615 pursuant to the residential low-density RL 5.5 zoning district development standards. The applicant is Hernan and Amelia Perez, and on behalf of Martina S. Pennino, who's a property owner of 747 Armorillo Way, they have requested a residential addition for a bathroom and for an extension of their garage. However, the Planning and Development Permit 1969-03 does not allow for additions, and therefore, they are requesting a Second Amendment to the PUD to allow for residential additions for 124 existing single-family detached dwelling units that are currently zoned RL 5.5, to be allowed to be expansions per the development standards of the RL 5.5 district. This would be for areas of Las Casitas units 1 and 2, and as I said, the development, any future building additions, residential additions would require compliance with RL 5.5 standards. And 68 of 124 property owners that are affected signed the application request, which is 55%, which exceeds the minimum required of 64 or 51%. This, next slide here, this shows actually the proposal for the, they wanted the addition here in the rear, and then a garage addition here, and then this is showing their elevation. And back in, this is the actual, this is the area covered by the PUD amendment, and this is their, this is their subject property. The, back in 1969, the original PUD approved for a 252-lot subdivision with compact homes on 42.25 acres. In 1972, there was another PUD, and that was to allow for 58 compact homes on 9.804 acres. And then there was a third one, which was a PUD for 65 single-family dwelling units, 13.39 acres, which actually became another PUD in 1984, which allowed for 42 single-family homes and 45 condominiums. And most of these were in this area here, and so the result was that the 124 units that you see here are covered by the original PUD back in 1969. All the surrounding uses are residential. The analysis of it is that the, is that the PUD back in 1969 had no Pacific Development Standards, as some of the PUDs do. This one with the RL 5.5, they would have to comply with the development standards, which includes that the lot size would be 5,500 square feet, the yard, minimum yards would be, front yard would have to be 20 feet, minimum 20 feet, interior side would be minimum 5 feet, corner side 15 feet. feet, corner side 15 feet, rear yard of 10 feet, distance between structures of 6 feet, and usable open space ranges from 10% of a lot area for corner, which would be a minimum 650 or 1,000 for interior lots or maximum for a corner lot. The, all the lots are legally created, subject to the RL 5, all legally created lots will be subject to RL 5.5. There are no changes to the number of lots, there were no changes in lot size, so there'll be the same number of lots, no changes in the lot size. It would allow for additions as, per the RL 5.5 standards and development standards, the design standards. And also during the Planning Commission meeting, there was issues, concerns with possible second-story additions. And any future second-story addition would require a, what we call residential design review, which would be a conditional use permit, which is the discretionary act, discretionary permit. And they would have to, which would require a public comment. And so therefore, on February the 7th, 2024, the Planning Commission recommended the city council find Planning and Development Permit 2023-01 exempt from CEQA per Section 15305, and that they approve the Planning and Development Permit 2023-01 with modifications recurring residential design review for second-story additions, and that the Planning and Development Permit application is, consists with the General Plan and Zoning Code, and it's been, public notice was sent on February 21st and published in the Monterey Herald on February 22nd. Are there any questions to staff at this time?
Thank you for the report. I'm going to go out to questions from council members. Councilmember Gonzalez. Thank you. Councilmember Barrera?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Wiles, I just had a question. Well, first of all, I want to thank Hernan and Armida Perez for going through all these hoops. But you know, they had called me regarding their issues at their house. And when they mentioned that Mr. Wiles was dealing with this, and that you were in favor, it looks like it was going to be a good thing to do. But how is it that we can figure out ways, because they did go through a lengthy process. And is there any way of streamlining these issues, you know, because we have a lot of, and you know, who would have thought, they're blessing a lot of people for access because of their home, they're blessing 124 other applicants that don't even have to go through a lot of the stuff. So they did a great thing. But how do we make it, because they didn't give up on what they were trying to do because they're thinking about their family. How do we streamline, or is it possible to make it easier for families that are just wanting to do an addition to their house?
Well, a lot of the applications, especially in the late 60s and into the 70s and possibly into the early 80s, were approval of planning and development permits, which had specific regulations on development. And in this case, this didn't, the PUD back in 1969 did not allow for building additions. So it had to be amended to allow for building additions. And the zoning code, zoning code requires that of all the residences that are impacted by that PUD, a minimum of 51% have to sign off on the application to support the, to support the application. So, you know, currently, you know, a lot of the old PUDs do have the restrictions on development. You know, there could be changes in the zoning code, but currently, you'd have to have the majority of all property owners sign off on the, on the application.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandoval? Thank you. Councilmember Rocha? Okay, take it out to the public. Are there any public comments on this item? Welcome.
Good evening again. Luis Chago Juárez, Building and Healthy Communities, and resident of Elise Salinas. It's really, really exciting to hear how the attention to this, to this, to the issue of being able to develop off of these small homes and to the Perez family for, you know, pushing this. We're seeing it come from the resident, from a resident. There is, there is, you know, questions that hopefully we can, you know, we can secure, will be answered. We know that they're meeting the need for that housing, and that's, that's just like, that's our priority. Then, you know, it's all of these other issues that come with development around parking and then the traffic. I'm hoping that we could really identify what that process is going to look like to help our residents, you know, ease whatever concerns that they might have around, around, you know, increasing the traffic and whatnot. But the need is being met. And, you know, I, you know, I'm thinking that we're going to, we're going to see more examples, we're going to see more folks that are taking, following the lead of this family because there's, we're at this point. And that, but the process, the process, the process is going to be very, very important for the, for the community at large. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Ann Warden. I live out in that area. I'm going to ask you, how long, when was the last time you were over on Lacasitas? Especially when the kids are getting out of school or when they're going in the morning? Now, there's only three ways you can get out of that area. That's on Nogal in Lacasitas and Nogal on Freedom. And the other way is on Amarillo. And when you try to make a left turn, which I no longer do, on Constitution and Lacasitas, you're taking your life on your hands. Now, when the school's out, there is almost three blocks from Virginia Roca Barton, the traffic gets backed up to Ryder. The same thing in Frank Paul, the traffic is backed to Lacasitas Drive and sometimes into Del Monte. I live out there. I go through there all the time. But those are small yards. We have one fam, I'm not against or one making a bathroom like this one couple here. I'm not against that. But on Ryder, they're building, they built a two-story home there about 10 years ago. Took them four years to build it. There's a huge, it's a whole new house in the back. There's no yard whatsoever. Now, are we going to allow that to all of them? Do you know that those homes are connected to their garages, garages are connected to each other? There's only a few homes like on Ryder that are full homes. Those are tiny coal sacks in there. I mean, tiny. Some don't even have blacktop on them.
Thank you for your comment.
So you think about that, or wait until we have our mayor and our other city council here before you vote on it. Because you're endangering all of us that live out there.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody on Zoom?
No public comment on Zoom.
Thank you so much. I'll go back out to the council members for comments. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you. You know, this is going to be a nuanced approach when it comes to any kind of changes like this. I grew up in Las Casitas and lived on Ibanal Circle for many, many years. And I definitely agree with Mary Ann Warden in saying that the traffic situation out there is really, really bad. In particular, what comes to mind is the intersection of Las Casitas and Ranchero, right next to Virginia Roca Barton. I've seen countless, 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 almost incidents and almost accidents. And though there has been improvements, and though there has been traffic adjustments done in Nogal, that's going to need to be an ongoing measure that we just have to continue in being aware of that. That being said, I do want to thank the Perez family for pushing this through. It's not an easy process to go through. And as it was mentioned before, now so many other families are going to get to benefit from this change. You know, addressing housing inaccessibility and overcrowding requires us to think outside the box and requires us to be creative. I know that it's not only localized to Las Casitas, but so many folks that I know in Las Casitas, it's not hyperbole when I say that in a four or five-bedroom house, you have a family living in a room and renting out that room. And that's just becoming more and more common. So as we move forward with changes like this, and I am in support of this change, I'd like us to really reconsider and really take a look at the parking situation. You know, I know that I've brought up in the past several times a parking plan for District 1 and for East Salinas, which was supported by Councilmember Barrera, Councilmember Sandoval, Councilmember Osorio, and even Councilmember McShane, I believe. I really would like us to consider that while we do tackle housing and while this does take precedent, we are affecting people's lives with these kinds of policies. So wanting to be as mindful as we can. Thank you.
Councilmember Barrera?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Wiles, thank you for your good work. And just for that, I want to make a motion to approve.
Okay. Councilmember Sandoval? Councilmember Rocha?
Thank you. I want to thank you for all of your work on this and thank the applicants for their due diligence on this as well. As someone that is entering the mid-20s, you know, I, I went, yeah, it's all downhill from there. Just kidding. As, you know, we went, I went off to college, trying to come back, trying to find somewhere to live. It's nearly impossible in Salinas. And the truth is, young professionals are not trying to get a two- to three-bedroom house. They're not trying to get really anything other than just somewhere to lay their head to rest and hopefully somewhere near enough to their job or want to stay in their community. And so having a diversity of housing options available is going to provide that kind of security for housing options for not only young professionals, but also senior citizens that want to retire and don't want to take care of. I'm always thinking of you, Tony. I want you to know that. But, you know, a diversity of options available for all people looking for various affordable housing options that are affordable by design as well. In terms of addressing the traffic issue, it is going to require us as a city council to have a lot of funding and attention to traffic calming measures in our city, and having that be a consistent allocation within our budget process moving forward to make sure that we're addressing that in the neighborhoods, working with the community as well to identify traffic calming solutions that are specific to that neighborhood as well. But happy to support the item.
Yes, and my comments are going to be, I remember when Councilmember Sandoval was first on the city council, one of the conversations was talking around the third parking spot. You know, there's already a bunch of folks that, like Mr. Cervantes that came earlier today, is talking about how there's going to be an improvement in making our streets safer, but it is going to be taking away parking spots. And when you are able to convert the, you know, garages into places where folks can, can live, again, that will cause a little bit more congestion. These are facts. It's not, it's not so much a debate. But I would say just continuing that conversation, if it ever comes out down the line of something that we can maybe look at, I think that even having the conversation would definitely be warranted. So that would only be my only comments. And definitely, anything that has to do with, with housing or making places adaptable so folks can live there, and changes like these are something I'm in agreement with. So just thank you, city staff. And so we're going to vote. Okay, this is the first one we're going to vote. Thank you. City Clerk, if we can do a roll call vote?
Will do. Thank you. Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Osorio?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Okay. And next up for our public hearings is going to be 24-081, Application to the California Department of Housing and Community Development for the Pro-Housing Incentive Program Round Two. Receive, we're going to be receiving a report from Rod Powell, our Assistant Community Development Director.
Yes. Good evening again. This will be a much shorter item than the last. We just wanted to bring to your attention, the city, due to its pro-housing designation, is now being afforded another opportunity to capture funds from the State Housing and Community Development Department. As a baseline, based upon the city's designation, we can receive $750,000. And because of the city's high pro-designation score, we are eligible to receive another $500,000 for a total of 1.25 million. Staff have looked at the allowable uses and are recommending that a million, I'm sorry, that $750,000 go towards an affordable housing program, which can be used for a variety of acquisitions, developments, et cetera, and that the remaining 500 be used for projects that are assisting persons who are experiencing or at risk of homelessness. And we feel that these would be the most valuable ways in which you could create projects and meaningful results with the funds. Just to point out that the city, when we applied and were designated, we were the original pro-housing designation for the Central Coast area. Since that designation, there are two other jurisdictions, San Luis Obispo and Santa Cruz, that are now designated. So in the option, and the reduction of funding available this round is also in play. So at the very minimum, we should receive $750,000, and the best-case scenario would be the 1.25 million, depending upon who applies and who is asking for things. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
So with our Mayor Protem, well, here he comes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Okay. So, yes, thank you for the presentation. And we'll be going out to Councilmember Questions, Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilmember Barrera?
No questions.
Councilmember Sandoval?
No questions.
Councilmember Rocha? Thank you. Okay, so we're going to go out to the audience. Anybody in chambers has any comments on this item? Anybody on Zoom? No, nobody on Zoom. Okay. And I'll bring it back to Councilmember for comments, Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Just happy to support the item. Really excited when we got our first pro-housing designation.
Yeah.
And the success that people all have had to have been designed.
Okay. Councilmember Barrera?
Yes. Thank you, and make a motion to approve.
That'll be a second, Councilmember Barrera. Okay. So, motion made by Councilwoman Gonzalez, seconded by Councilmember Barrera, and Councilmember Sandoval.
Good job. I mean, I don't, we've already said it all, but this, you know, this being your last item, I mean, you took us to a pro-housing designation, and this is just another testament to the good work you did here in Salinas. So, thank you.
Councilmember Rocha?
I echo the sentiments of my colleagues. Thank you for your hard work, and I'm excited to bring this, participate in this process to bringing this for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And I too am very supportive of the item. And if we can take it out for a roll call vote?
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Osorio?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Okay. And it looks like we are going to be going to consideration items. So first up is going to be consideration item 24-096, Determination of Administrative Site Plan Review for the Hebron Family Center. We are going to be receiving a report from Lisa Britton, Community Development Director.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Protem, and members of the council. We have a situation where we are in the process of designing and intending to construct a new Hebron Family Center, but the multiple parcels are situated on two different zoning districts. One zoning district, public, semi-public, requires a site plan review process. The residential portion requires a conditional use permit. And our code allows for the council to make a determination as to the appropriate alternative review process when the property is owned by the city, and a determination can be made that there is benefit to the public. So we are requesting that the council make those findings of benefit with the Hebron Family Family Center and to streamline the review process for this project, establish just one process, which is the site plan review. So I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Gonzalez?
No questions. Happy to move this item forward.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Barrera?
Yeah, great work. I know there's a lot of people that were following this and they're very supportive.
Councilmember Rocha?
No questions.
Okay. I have no questions either. We'll be taking it out to the public. Is there anybody in the public that has any questions on this item? Okay, we'll be taking it out to Zoom. Anybody on Zoom that has any comments on this item? Okay, no, none on Zoom. So we'll be coming back out with Councilmember comments. Councilmember Gonzalez?
I'm just really excited to see this come forward. I feel like...
I feel like we've all been very much in anticipation of this new Hebron Family Center. So I wanted to thank our city staff, in particular, Ms. Lundquist for her work on this. This has been a long process and anything that we can do to streamline the process and move it forward, I am very much in support of. So, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Barrera?
Absolutely. You know, thanks to Mr. Kristen Lundquist as well, I think there was like over a hundred different programs out there. You know, I know there's a lot of companies that are eager for this thing to happen. So thank you for your good work and I'm looking forward to the shows, getting them ready, getting the kids involved. It's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rocha?
Very excited to support the project and thank you for all of your hard work.
And my comments are just thank you for both of the work to Ms. Lisa Britton and Kristen Lundquist on the collaboration of really making sure that if there is any snags or if there's anything that may delay the process of this, you guys are being very proactive in bringing that to us. So I just wanted to say thank you. Speaking about the hundreds of different services that are provided there, this is, it's critical that we keep on moving forward on this project. And I just wanted to say thank you to my colleagues that have been supportive of this project because I think we all understand how important the Hebron Family Center is to that community, my community, right? So I'm in that community. And also, the only comment that I would like to make is if we can have an update on maybe when, to Councilmember Barrera's comment, when there may be a either groundbreaking or when there may be some type of ceremony or things when construction gets by. I know that there's also a project in the Caesar Chavez Park as well that'll be coming up in the next couple weeks, maybe months, but excited to see that as well. So happy to support the item as well. And if we can go out for a roll call vote?
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Osornio?
Yes.
Motion passes.
If we can go to next item on consideration, 24-115, Annual Budget Community Sponsorship Policy. We're going to be receiving a report from Selena Andrews, the Assistant Finance Director. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. I'm Selena Andrews, Assistant Finance Director. The item for you today is the Annual Budget Community Sponsorship Policy Draft. The recommended motion is to receive the report on the annual budget, community sponsorship, and adopt a resolution approving the community sponsorship policy. The city has historically provided financial support for sponsorship initiatives and this is done through the annual budget process each year. In fiscal year 2324, the city appropriated $733,000 in community sponsorships and $375,000 was appropriated in separate funding agreements. This table illustrates the sponsorship contributions that were appropriated in the current year. As you can see, the total there is just over a million. Oops. And before you, you should have the sponsorship draft policy, which includes these elements, an overview of purpose definitions, policy, funding limits, application requirements, application review process, eligibility criteria, and procedure. With that, staff is available to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Assistant Finance Director. If we can go out to Councilmember Gonzalez, who are any questions? Okay, Councilmember Barrera? Okay, no questions. Councilmember Sandoval?
I have a lot of questions. Thank you very much. I did see the finance presentation that you did and the questions that were asked during that meeting, so very informative. I guess since you're fairly new, some of the questions will be for the city manager. But prior to this policy implementation or as we're implementing now, how were requests processed in the past? You're going to avoid that one, Selena. No. So I first want to commend the Assistant Finance Director, working with Lisa and Kristen and Patricia Barajas and a number of our folks who have dealt with these funding requests in the past. And we listened to you last budget process when you said, can we have a process? It was haphazard to answer your question in the past. The community often didn't know. Sometimes they came from a council member. Sometime we just received a letter to the tune of what she described to you. Some were baked in lease agreements and in permit applications like the airshow. And then some came last minute at your request in terms of, well, can we do something for Hartnell College or can we do this or that? This process that you just heard from Assistant Director Andrews is to prevent that from happening in the coming fiscal year. And so I commend the effort and we're trying to, I also want to note in there, we also are concerned about the dollar figure every year. Last year it was over a million dollars. You note in Selena's report, we're going to have a range from zero to 250 because you have other obligations, but even that range can be questioned in any given year. And you need to be always constantly reminded of the drivers that the person in this chair should always be worried about, as are your directors, the operating budget, your employee agreements with MOUs, your cost of health care, your obligations to workers' compensation, your obligation to the pension system. Those obligations are required. What Ms. Andrews is referring to here are very nice connections with the community and they're really needed, but they're not required. At the end of the day, and this is a long answer, you indulged me, Councilmember Sandoval, and I appreciate that. At the end of the day, you have obligations and you have budget asks. So that would be my long answer to your question. Thank you. Well, you have another opportunity for a long answer because one of the questions that you answered or alluded to is the next thing. It's, I want to know if there's, in this policy, can we place language in there to help determine what the actual allocation will be? I mean, we, like you alluded to, we don't actually have extra money to give out. We have pension liabilities, we have homelessness, we have sidewalks. Lord, we have potholes galore. And so although I think a lot of these organizations are very worthy, I don't think we have the luxury to be giving away city funds. So is that something, not to mention our giant pension liability, so is there something that can be added in there to give us guidelines? Because, you know, you said whoever sits in the seat, I like a policy to have a long-lasting effect, right? And, and... So... So to the question, if I understand it correctly, one of the items you're not seeing tonight is the application form, if you will. And if you're advocating that there be a limit as someone applies for funds, 15,000, 20,000, whatever that cap limit is, we can certainly look to that. I need always help from our wonderful legal counsel, Chris, and maybe we make that part of a motion to cap that in any application form. We didn't identify it in this plan.
Yeah, so if I understand the question correctly, it's to set a total maximum allocation amount, which would apply to all of the applications, right? So for example, it'd be a $200,000 per year maximum limit and all of the applicants would be submitting their applications, you know, for that total pool of money. Is that the question?
It is. We do it for art, we do it for a lot of other things, but this seems to have no limits.
Yeah, so I think you can do that. And Section 5 of the draft policy refers to funding limits and what's missing from there is just the actual dollar amount. And so that's something I think the council would have to set on an annual basis as part of your budgetary process. And I think that the language in here allows you to do that.
Okay, yeah. Thank you very much because that is one of my concerns. Is there, is there some language that we could add in order to include a provision that disqualifies specific organizations that although they do do a lot of public benefit, but either make political endorsements or political contributions?
Yes, you could add that language.
Okay, that would, that would be one of my asks of the council. And I'm glad we have the policy. What can we do to ensure that a lot of different organizations have, that the funding gets distributed equitably? You know, last year there was an allocation request for Juneteenth for, I think it was a thousand dollars, didn't even, you know, make it past the city manager at the time. So how are we going to make sure that funding that hasn't been given to, or opportunities that haven't been given to specific groups of people are, how are we going to take care of that? The equity factor, right? So the important thing is that we make sure we put applications in the communities in your hands so you can, we can get something back, whether it's a thousand dollar request. But they are going to have to fill out a form. The example I gave, we had one gentleman come last week wanting money for the fireworks show. It would be incumbent upon us to give that gentleman an application form coming out of this policy. The policy identifies, I believe it's a 30-day window usually every March or April, Selena, where we're expecting the community, and this will be the first year, but they're going to have to be engaged through you, through the social medias are we have in the audience, and we're going to have to get it out every year so that everyone understands that there's a process to this and there's a form they have to fill out. Last year, one of my concerns that I had was we were sponsoring an event that I think the ticket price was like $175. And, you know, although I recognize that specific event had a free student entry fee, but is there something we can include in the policy that we will, that perhaps if the ticket price is $150 or something outside of the average resident in Salinas, that that will not be allowed? Or how would we address that, city attorney?
So we would have to put some thought to that. You could put some eligibility criteria in there along the lines for a maximum ticket price, if I hear your question correctly. So I think it's something that you could do. We'd have to think about what that maximum ticket price may be. So we would look for some direction from the council. And I just want to go back to your earlier question. Under Section 8 for eligibility criteria, political organizations are already eliminated from being able to participate in this program. So we've already addressed that in the criteria to answer your earlier question. And under the review process, all of these applications go to the city manager, right? So whomever is sitting in that chair is going to have an opportunity to review all of these applications, not only for equity reasons, but also for the question that you're asking now, are the ticket prices too high, et cetera? And that recommendation comes to this full council and you all will have the final determination as to whether or not something gets sponsored.
Thank you. And I'll save the rest for comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Rocha?
Thank you. Is this policy going to apply to this budget cycle?
Yes, this will be the first budget cycle.
And just in terms of identifying what is considered sponsorship or, yeah, sponsorship, Community Human Services, it was a real effort to get the city to contribute money towards Community Human Services, but we're actually a member of the Joint Powers Authority. So just for clarification, would Community Human Services be exempt from this process and would the funding continue to them based on an agreement established between the city and then through the Joint Powers Authority?
So that would, we could look at the JPA, but as you recall, there was not a set dollar amount and that's kind of been all over the map. But because we're JPA, much like we have lease agreements or permit agreements, I suspect we could deal with that separately and not as part of this.
Okay, okay, that makes sense to me. That's my only question. Thank you.
Questions on this? You know, I'm going to be reserving for comment, actually. If we can go out to the public for, anybody have any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none. Anybody on Zoom? Okay.
We have two. Kevin Dayton, two minutes.
Kevin Dayton, Government Affairs Director, Salinas Valley Chamber of Commerce. We've been, the Chamber of Commerce, legislative government affairs committee has been talking about this since we first realized in the last budget process that, as to quote Jim Pia, this process has been a little haphazard and I don't think anybody was really clear about what was going on and I don't think the city council was either. So we are in support of what's before you today with this policy. A letter has been sent to you yesterday and we also included a few suggested amendments. One of them was to indicate how and when a recipient has to return money if they don't actually, in the end, provide the paperwork and fulfill the criteria in the first place. And maybe that's something that could be put into the application. Then secondly, I remember a January 2023 Seaside City Council meeting where it was a little awkward because some very important programs, they had failed to fill out their applications correctly. And I think you should have a system set up there so that if somebody sends in an application and doesn't include a page or forgets to fill in a line, they don't get automatically disqualified. Somebody just calls them up and tells them, you got to do it because I think that was just a weird situation there. And then finally, that list that was on the slideshow, I think you should just stick that into the budget every year so that it's clear to people where those went. So those are the things that the Salinas Valley Chamber of Commerce would suggest for you about this policy. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Looks like we have another comment on Zoom.
Robin, two minutes.
Thank you. I'd just like to really give a shout out to Councilmember Sandoval. Thank you very much for posing the question and demanding more transparency and accountability. This is by far and away the first meeting that I have watched where there is as much transparency and a lot less passive aggressive commentary between council members. Again, thank you very much, Councilmember Sandoval, for taking the initiative and being brave enough to address this. Thank you.
Thank you. And seeing no more hands raised on Zoom, I'll be going back out to the council members. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I'm just really happy to see that we finalized this draft. I remember last year's budget deliberations drew quite a bit of controversy because we didn't have a set model that allowed for more uniformity. This helps us eliminate bias, intentional or unintentional, and this just really delivers a more transparent process that holds us accountable and holds those that are requesting the funds accountable. So happy to move this item forward.
Second. Councilmember Barrera?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You know what, and I agree with some of the comments, the value that we need to see in some of these organizations is the value they bring to the city. You know, sometimes prevention is very quiet, but it saves us a million dollars with intervention and then instead of looking at Chief Murray as turn around, we're going to handcuff you, they see him as an ally, they see him as somebody that's productive in the community. And I think these valuable groups, as we look at them, I hope that we take in strong consideration the value that they bring to the people that we're serving. I see a lot of these groups and, yeah, we have to be consistent with the funding, hold people accountable. But sometimes these nonprofits need guidance as well, you know, instead of us just saying no, we need to figure out what investment are they bringing here? So I think it's pretty good. So thank you for that. So thank you for that.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yeah, I, I just want to echo that, that we're not setting a limit to these contributions. And so, you know, we had a robust discussion, but at the end of the day, how are we going to be fiscally responsible if we don't have either a limit or a way to determine how much we're going to give every year? Are we just going to say this year it'll be 1.5 million, which we don't have? I don't feel this is responsible to, to do with that. So, you know, I'm going to look to our City Attorney or City Manager, how we can come up with some formula that, you know, we support some of these community groups, but we don't give away money we don't have. That's my first comment, and I'll ask for a response. The second is, I did read the, the letter sent by the chamber, and I, I do, I will ask the council to include one of the provisions specifically, you know, what happens or what, just like other grant applications, there's that application, but there's also a report. And what happens if they spend the money and don't do the work? So, you know, they, they did recommend some guidelines on, on abiding by the criteria, what happens if they fail to perform as indicated in the application? So I think we need to include that kind of language. And then, as the city manager said, some of our funding agreements are, probably going to misquote you, but are just baked in. And the funding, the approved funding agreements that we had shown in the slide for last year, those were the approved, but those weren't the actuals. And, and I think some of our residents don't know that. For example, I, I don't know what the number was for the Rodeo. I think it was approved at 120,000, but it's more like 375,000. And so, you know, I, I feel very uncomfortable with, with the way, I'm glad that this is a policy, but I feel like there needs to be, before moving forward, I'd ask the council to consider adding additional language to protect the residents and our money. So I don't know if you caught that, City Attorney, but a formula about adding before we move forward to determine how much we're going to give, and then possibly including or amending, I guess that'd come through a friendly motion or amendment about the provision and guidelines that I mentioned from the chamber.
Thank you, Councilmember Sandoval. So on your first point about a, we have in there a range, but it seems like you want to make it a, a minimum and a cap. So what I'm hearing from you, a potential cap on this policy with stronger language. The next point being that in terms of, of individual groups applying, should they have a cap? Should an individual application have a cap as well? And then to Councilmember Rocha's comment earlier, we do need to pull out the JPA, the Rodeo, and what Councilmember Sandoval referenced a moment ago, Assistant Director, was the fact that our in-kind services have sometime been identified at such a number, but then have stretched based on overtime or other things. So I don't know how we can solve all of these questions tonight, Chris, in terms of wordsmithing this.
We may not be able to, and it may be that we have to take this feedback from the council, refine this policy, and bring it back perhaps at your next meeting or the third meeting in March, just so that we have some time to think about these things and, and draft up some proper language. So that would be my request, if, if that's the consensus of the council.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I just, I want to be responsible, and I want our residents to feel comfortable. And also, we have, we're going to have to own up to this. If we're giving away money to organizations, or I'm not going to say giving away money, we're supporting these organizations who do good work, but we're not taking care of some of our basic needs, I think. I'm not sure what the balance is, but I appreciate your, your, your approach, City Attorney, and that's what I'd ask for the council, if we can do that.
Councilmember Rocha?
Thank you. Just to get clarification, are you talking about a cap of the individual contributions or a cap of the allowable funds to be spent for sponsorship?
Sure, I, I think, well, you know, I, I just don't foresee us having this amazing excess of money, so I, I guess it'd be, both would be something that I'd like to consider.
One thing that comes to mind, and obviously I think it would be worthwhile to have it go back to finance and have staff give their input, is potentially establishing a cap of 1% to 3% of the budget being used for sponsorship, depending on what the financial outlook is that fiscal year. Because we have a budget of about, in terms of operating, I want to say about 150 million around there, and then with CIP, it gets closer to over 200.
Yeah, about 248 in total.
Yeah, so of that, I would say 1% to 3% of the operating budget could be set aside for sponsorship, which would be around 400,000, 400,000 to 500,000, depending, it, it would range dramatically different if we had serious financial shortcomings, but that would at least establish some level of guidance to the city manager that year. I do think 1.3 million to be spent in sponsorships is excessive as a city, especially when we're at times trying to identify how we could set aside $250,000 for traffic calming projects when it could really come from that pool of funding. So that's something that I would just suggest, perhaps that being the range, 1% to 3% of the operating budget be set aside to that, and the city manager having the discussion. But with that being said, I would, you know, support pulling back my second to the motion, if Councilwoman Gonzalez would be in favor of it, and making a, a motion to send it back to finance to further develop a framework for how to establish a cap and a minimum for what, how much we're spending on both of those items. Okay, is that a second to the motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Other than that, I appreciate the work that everyone has given to this project, and I think it's better. It provides for more transparency, more accountability in how we use our finances. The only thing that I would point out is, under the eligibility criteria, it does say political organizations are not eligible for sponsorships. I would just add that sometimes nonprofits are 501(c)(4)'s, so I don't know if that would necessarily be considered a political organization, but allows for them to make endorsements. And so I think establishing just any organization that engages in political activity for the purposes of campaigning would not be eligible for that, or making endorsements, right? But yeah, other than that, those are all my comments, and I'd like to make the motion to send it back to finance and to develop some framework around that with the second from Councilwoman Gonzalez. Those are all my comments.
Okay, so there's, there's a motion and a second, and we'll be getting the language of that.
City Attorney, do we need just to table this item? We've heard all the input as opposed to a motion specifically?
Yeah, no, so that's what I understand the motion to be, is to table this item as it goes back to the finance committee, then it will come back to council.
Okay.
So I do think we should take action on that.
Okay, so we'll take action on that. I just have a couple of comments, and I just really want to, to thank staff for, for, you know, bringing this to us, sitting on the finance committee. I know that there was some input that, that we had as far as some things that we would like to see included, and thank you for taking that feedback. Also, I just really want to commend this, this council. We, we, we understand that the item's in front of us right now, but we just, we just want to get it right. And sometimes that doesn't always, it's not always the fastest. You're not going to achieve that by being fast. You're going to achieve that by taking time and really opening it up and making sure that it's a great policy. So I, I know that there's already some really great parts in that, and I want to thank you for that. But, but for me, it, it is important that we get this right, because when we think about the organizations that will be coming to ask for this funding, you're thinking about ACE, you know, the Asian Cultural Festival, you're, you're talking about El Grito, so you're talking about El Grito on Alisa, you're talking about Salinas Valley Pride, you're talking about the Parade of Lights. These are, these are organizations in our community that are doing great work, that impact thousands of people. We need to get this right. And so I just, I look forward to seeing the next revision. I would just ask staff that if there is a way that maybe there can be, I don't know if it would be in, in our briefings, because I know that there's council members in there, but it would maybe be before this comes to finance. I don't know if that's something that could be done, if, if we're able to talk about that. But I, I'll just, I'll, I'll wait on it to be tabled, but I, I look forward to seeing what, what could be talked about and making sure we get it right. So thank you. City Clerk, if we can go to a roll call vote?
Councilmember, Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez? Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Osornio?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Okay, and it looks like, all right, we've, we've, it looks like we've made it here. There is eight items on the consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull an item for separate vote or discussion? I'll start with Councilmember Gonzalez.
I'm pulling ID 24-125.
24-125, okay. Councilmember Barrera?
Yes, 074 and 125.
074 and 125, okay. Councilmember Sandoval?
125.
125, Councilmember Sandoval? Okay, Councilmember Rocha?
125.
Okay, Councilmember Rocha? And I will be pulling item 097 and item 125. Okay. Out to the public, any items that the public would like to pull? Anybody on Zoom? Okay, looks like none. Okay, so if we can, I'd like to receive a motion to accept all of the other items.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, council, motion made by Councilmember Barrera, seconded by Councilmember Sandoval. If we can go out for a roll call vote?
Vote for items 119, 072, 076, 089, 114. Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Osornio?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, and so first up will be item 074, Barton Road Safe Routes to School Improvement Project Acceptance. And that's going to be Councilmember Tony Barrera.
Mr. Jacobs, always great to see you. I, I just pulled his item. If you can just share with the public the good work that was taking place here and what you're asking for.
Yeah, so, so this, this project was substantially complete several months ago. It basically did a roundabout system at Barton, at Alisa on Williams and Skonberg around the school there. It also developed a drop-off zone for the school, and it was done as a Safe Streets for All, it was a Safe Routes to School project. So basically, it was a weird intersection there, intersection of like four roads with a, with a A-shaped intersection there, and we installed round, two roundabouts there, put a, a drop-off zone for the kids at the school. Seems to be working out really well for us. So that's it.
Well, Mr. Jacobs, with that said, there was a lot of people that I spoke to that actually live there, they see this on a daily basis, and they were very happy with the work. So thank you for your work and, and your staff. So, Mr. Mayor, move to approve.
Second.
Okay, so it looks like it's been moved and seconded. Going to be going out for a roll call vote?
Yes. Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez? Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Osornio?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, all right, moving along here to item 24-097, Design Build of Hebron Family Center. That's me. All right. Can, can you just give the public a little bit of an update about what this item is? Just a brief overview?
Sure. Because of the time constraints that are involved in, in the funding that we received from the state, this project needs to be completely finished by December 2025. So we decided to do the design-build route for the project, which means we hire a consultant to do what we call a bridging document, which, that's when we went out to the, to the public and got their comments on what they wanted to see in this building and what it should look like. We took those to a conceptual plan that a council approved, and then we sent that out to some contractors to give us a, a price to, to actually design it and build it. And the reason why it can usually design-build processes faster is the contractor can design it and build it at, basically at the same time. They can get some of the, the foundation work approved and go out there and build the foundation while they're, while they're doing the other portions of the approval. And, and that tends to, to expedite the process. So right now, we're, we're looking at probably a two or three-month design process where the design builder team will get together and build to a point where they'll submit work to the city for plan check. And then once that process is finished, then they'll go out there and break ground and, and start building it. We expect the construction to be a 13- or 14-month process, and that's why we want to get it going now so that we're completely done by December 2025.
Okay, and, and just if, just because I want to, I want to be clear, the, the, in two or three months with that build process, does that mean that potentially there will start to be, like, you can visually see the changes happening to the area? There'll be, you know, digging and, and moving stuff?
Once, once the, the contractor is to a point where he's comfortable going out there and starting to work, that's when you'll start seeing something happen out there, and then it will be continuous until it's completed.
Okay, but if, I, I mean, if the project takes 13 or 14 months, probably pretty soon, huh?
Yeah. Yeah, they need, they need to get started here pretty quickly.
Maybe, maybe tomorrow, or?
No, again, we, we have to, we have to sign the contracts.
Okay.
Both, both the city and the, and the contractor get those signed, and then we have to have a pre-construction meeting, and that's when we'll get a schedule from them and, and really understand how they're going to process everything through us.
That, that's great. This is very exciting. I, I just, again, like we spoke earlier, this is just a huge project for, for, for Salinas. So I'm, do I get to make a motion as well? Okay, well, this is in District Four. So I'd like to make a motion, a, a motion to approve this or item?
Second.
Okay, all right.
Christmas at Hebron's?
Okay. City Clerk, if we go out for a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez? Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Osornio?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. And I'd like to move on to item 24-125, Modification to the Classification, Salary Schedule Reclassification, Police Hiring Incentive Overhires. And it looks like this was pulled by all of the council members, so if we can start with Councilwoman Gonzalez, please.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I just wanted to make marina for her work on this, especially when there are such technical changes. I appreciate the layout and the intentionality in getting this done. I wanted to start by making a motion that would approve the first three resolutions, and I'll three those out in their entirety. The first, to add the classification of Human Resources Manager and adjust the salary range for the temporary classifications.
Thank you. Of Public Service Maintenance Aid and Public Service Maintenance Worker 1 and 2. Resolution number two, to approve the recommended reclassifications for the Human Resources Department Reorganization. And resolution number three, approve one over hire in both the Police Department and in the Community Development Department. I do believe that at the time, having the current hiring incentives for PD are where we should be. We approved those last year, and I don't yet feel that enough time has passed for it to merit another increase. So I'll be bringing that motion forward for the first three resolutions, and that is it for me, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Barrera?
Yes. Chief Murray, good to see you here. What does this mean for the Police Department on number four?
Could you repeat that, please, Councilmember?
Yes, on number four with the, you know, the comment was that it's too close to approve, but you as the, the chief of your department, where, where are you at with this?
Sure. I know it was within the last year. We've increased our efforts to bring more officers to the Salinas Police Department. I know you, you know that, and you've been very supportive. What we've found, and I've, I've personally met with some lateral officers, officers who are working police, working police officers at other agencies, I've personally met with them, and trying to encourage them to come to the Salinas Police Department. And although these incentives don't necessarily draw a And although these incentives don't necessarily draw a lot of people to the organization, because there's other agencies with larger incentives, and there's one in the Bay Area that I think offers seventy five thousand dollars. But what it does do for people who are thinking about coming to the Salinas Police Department already, working police officers, if you imagine a scale and they're weighing out the, the options of whether or not they should come, this tends to tip the scale in favor of coming to the Salinas Police Department, coming to our community to serve our community and, and leaving whatever agency they're at. So I know it's been just about a year, but I think this would actually benefit the community. It would actually bring working police officers here, which shortens the amount of time needed to train them. And it's a benefit for everyone.
Thank you, sir, and I'm going to ask the city manager. I know we talked about funding, we talked about supporting the police department, Mr. Pia. Where, where are we at as far as funding? You looking at the finances and everything, how, how do you see number four?
So just to clarify, the motion on the table by Councilmember Gonzalez is essentially one of the resolutions of the two you have in front of you. The one encompasses one, items one, two, three, and then the fourth. As the Chief Murray and Director Gallegos identified, that much of this money will be captured within the existing budget. So there's nothing that will change this year. You're exploring the fact that we did it last year. Marina, I think you would have a number of how many we've done and it would be good for the council to be reminded of that number. I think it's twelve or thirteen?
Thirteen. Just as a reminder, in 2015, the city did issue, did provide hiring incentives for ten police officers at twenty thousand and five thousand dollar referral bonus. The city was able to fill those ten positions over a two-year period. Eight of those officers are still with the city of Salinas. Last year, you did, you did approve an incentive of twenty seven thousand five hundred and the city has been able to fill four lateral positions and nine police recruit positions. So as I mentioned in, in the council report, the police chief, his staff, finance department, human resources, together with the POA president, met to look at what we could do to further attract applicants. And this was an i, an item that we thought was one-time funds that could be achieved through salary savings and help immediately with recruitment efforts.
And so Councilmember, these, thank you Marina, this is another opportunity for the toolbox to have a way. You heard Chief Murray's out beating the streets on laterals and I think we need to do all that we can. And this is just, is this a guarantee that we're going to hire of, of a full force? No, but is it a tool in the box to help us? Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Thank you, I think, I mean, this is another tool, our tool belt, right? We need, we need to address some hiring shortages across all our departments, so thank you for your work on that. I had reached out to the city attorney a little earlier and just because one of the items that I saw, I saw as an opportunity and the report it says twenty five hundred dollars as a referral bonus and it's for staff. And I thought, what an amazing opportunity if we were to expand this not just to staff, but to the community. Instead of having five hundred people out there looking for an officer or a referral, we could extend that to the community. And so Chris, is that something that we could work in or how would that approach?
Um, Councilmember, I think it's a fine idea. We would want to build some protocol and policy around that before we actually implement it. So I think that's something that we can work on with your Human Resources Department going forward.
Okay, yeah, that would be my only recommendation as, as a possible direction.
Councilmember Rocha?
Thank you, it's my understanding that this, well, it says here, the police department will utilize salary savings from budgeted vacant positions to operate the incentive program for a total of approximately a hundred thousand dollars. The way I see it is we're using existing resources in a one-time funds manner to address an existing need within the department. There was a member of the public that commented that hiring incentives are not as effective. We should focus instead on increasing police salaries. From looking at the financial outlook of the city, that puts us closer to bankruptcy. And the truth is, we do need to find one-time fund ways to address these issues that are not going to be a long-term financial burden on this city. And salaries and healthcare and pensions are a long-term budgetary strain on our city. And so the fact that this is a one-time funds within existing salary savings is different than raising salaries. I would add that this is not going to address our issue entirely and we really have to focus intently on creating a more holistic approach to public safety. And we started that by moving forward the Mobile Crisis Unit and I would like to see greater investment in that. Because the truth is, we could have hiring incentives that recruit officers here, but if an officer has to be a mental health clinician, has to be a social worker, has to be on top of the work every single thing else, that hiring incentive is not going to do anything for us. So you really have to make sure that we are sending qualified staff to the appropriate calls and we're moving in that direction with the establishment of the Mobile Crisis Unit that we set aside money to do with that. But we have to continue to work in that regard. And I'd also say that I would like to see us use hiring incentives also for our SCIU employees and other positions within the city that are not law enforcement that we're struggling to hire. Because those blue collar worker positions that we're really struggling to hire people for are just as important as these positions for our city as well. But as I understand, it's within existing savings within the department and it's not going to contribute to a long-term addition to our existing budgetary constraints and debt from pension. So thank you for your presentation and hopefully we can continue to work towards creating a more holistic approach to public safety.
Thank you, Councilmember Rocha. And I, I was in support of this when I, I had the opportunity to sit with, with two of my colleagues and we met with the SPOA and we really started asking questions about, well, what are other cities doing to be able to attract more police officers? Again, we understand that pay is, is something that will always hit that budget. But being able to bring in, bring in police officers with an incentive, have them here. It sounds like if, we still have eight officers here from the last time we did this and it seems to be working to bring in some police officers. Hopefully with, with council, maybe, you know, whether it's approved tonight or not. But hopefully that'll be something where you can go back to those other police officers and say, hey, look what Salinas is doing, come on over. We definitely like to have you here in Salinas patrolling our streets. So with that, I would like to take it out to a vote.
You have the motion on the table, but is there a second to that motion?
Which is to vote on the original three resolutions.
That's correct.
I seconded Councilwoman Gonzalez's motion.
Okay.
Okay.
I think I did, did I? Well, if not, then I'll second your motion.
Okay.
So just so that I'm, so then that would be, that wouldn't be staff's record, it'd be a substitute motion, is that correct?
Well, no, I think that, as I understand, this would provide Councilwoman Gonzalez the ability to vote on those three resolutions and then the fourth resolution would come before the council for a separate vote. And so, yeah, I support that.
That's correct, so what's going to happen is there's going to be a vote on items one, two, and three under the recommended motion. So that's the motion that's on the table now and then when you do a vote on that one, we'll bring back item number four for a separate vote.
So, and right after we do the first?
Tonight, yes.
Tonight, okay.
And, and city attorney, they're, they are broken down into resolutions. So essentially, the first resolution in the staff report is what Councilmember Gonzalez is proposing. And so it's broken down that way.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so if we can go out for, City Clerk, if we could go out for that first motion on the table?
So we have a motion and a second, Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez? Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Temosornio?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, and if we can go out for the, now, has there been a motion and a second for the second part of that?
No.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion and a second for the other item on the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second. And if we can go out for a roll call vote, it looks like it's been properly moved and seconded?
Council, Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez? Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Temosornio?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so it looks like that is, that's, that's all that we have for the consider consent items here or the consent agenda? And so now we're going to be going out to councilmember reports, appointments, and future agenda items. We're going to start with Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Just a few things to highlight, I attended our fireworks subcommittee with Councilmember McShane and Mayor Craig. Very thankful to our partners in the fire department for helping prepare and being a little more proactive this year in anticipation of fireworks season. And then wanted to invite the public for a few events and a few opportunities to work with the city. First is inviting the public to reach out and if there are any, if there are any advocates for animals or wildlife. Currently, the Hitchcock Road Animal Services Agency Advisory Committee has two vacancies for the city of Salinas. There were applicants, but none were from the city itself, so we're looking to get city representation there. And then wanting to invite the public to the Amor Salinas Community Cleanup of Cesar Chavez Park from nine to eleven AM on the sixteenth of March. And then, last but not least, asking that we save the date, no time yet has been posted, but the Salinas one hundred and fifty year celebration will be taking place on April sixth at the Steinbeck Center. And that would be it for me, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gonzalez, Councilmember Barrera?
Yes, thank you, sir. We've been involved in a lot of major cleanups throughout the week, very intense, dealing with people and their concerns. I do want to thank city staff for getting, you know, a lot of times you hear a lot of things out in the community, but I, I looked into it regarding, folks, folks are being told several days in advance that the cleanups are going to take, that they're going to happen at a certain time and day. And the other thing is, I was really happy there was several people helping out other people with their personal belonging, belongings. And, and Mr. Pia, I think to the comments of, you know, we do have a serious mental health issue out there in our community. I don't know how we can build a good working relationship with the county because we really need to work together. There's a lot of people out there in, in serious pain. And you know, as we're moving, as people are moving from place to place, we got to figure out a plan, how, how we can stay on top of it because for some odd reason, there's a lot of trash throughout some of our streets because of these similar issues. And on another nicer note, I want to thank the people from Montevilla, they have been consistently here. But to the staff that have been diligently working with them. I, I just want to let the, my colleagues know that Montevilla gets a lot of attention. We are out there a lot of times. We may not move as quickly as they want to, but we are doing the best we can, we really are. And the issue right now is the, because we're dealing with the school district as well, so you hear a lot of complaints that people are making a mess in the park. So please, for those colleagues that are hearing all these things, please direct your concerns to me because we are there. I want to thank Chris and Lundquist for her diligence out there, doing the best we can. But as we take care of one thing, there's five other things that we need to do, so it's, it's just ongoing. But you know what, I want to thank them for being consistent and, and to all the, the public. And I want to thank our Assistance Finance Director for the great work that you're doing, thank you for that. I'm, I'm sure you have a good finance committee that you can work with, so thank you for your good work. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Sandoval?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank Councilmember Osornio and Rocha for presenting the Black History Month Proclamation to Tony Anderson and students that were part of founding EMOJA. EMOJA, which means unity. It's a community and critical resource, it's a, the group is a community and critical resource dedicated to enhancing the cultural and educational experiences of the African-American and other students. Thank you to Tayshel, Kayla, who was here a little earlier, Kendra and Asia for facilitating and participating in the roundtable discussion. The need to bring industry to Salinas, support youth activities, address inequalities within the city were my biggest takeaways. It was also an honor to present a District Five recognition to Mr. Charles Chambers, a longtime Salinas resident, active in our community. And, and in an interview, he said he enjoys causing good trouble. And he defines that as talking about things that nobody wants to talk about. I don't like the title of Good Trouble because I think it alludes to something negative, but I think it's something necessary. But he also volunteers with the Salinas Juneteenth. He also worked in law enforcement, both as a police officer and a correctional officer, and then next took on community issues from a different angle, switching careers to human services. And I'd like the city in the future to honor his amazing legacy. I also met with Kevin Dayton of the Salinas Valley Chamber and we discussed many issues. He presented some very good suggestions that will facilitate better governance, governance in our city. And now I'm going to be looking to my colleagues, although there's only a couple of us left here. I'd like to see if I can get support to discuss in the future a Sunshine Ordinance for nonprofits. It's called Sunshine Ordinance Nonprofit Public Access and look at an ordinance so we can have more transparency with the agencies we deal with. Thank you, Councilmember Barrera and Councilmember Gonzalez, appreciate your support on that. And then I have another request, I think we need to look at our travel and reimbursement policy. Based on information provided by the city manager, I'm concerned that, that certain policies are not being followed and they need to be updated as well as travel reimbursement limits. I know the, either the state, looking at our finance, Assistant Finance Director of the state or the federal gave some new updates to the limit. So I don't know if I can get support from one of my colleagues to look at that.
I'll join you on that.
Thank you, Councilmember Barrera and Rocha. I'd also like to thank Chief, who's here, and Sergeant Magaña for facilitating a ride along. I had, I don't want to say it's a great experience, but it was very insightful. You know, it's hard to see people at their, at their worst moments. It also, it also showed how long I lived in Salinas because unfortunately, some of the calls were to people I knew. But that was interesting, I also had a chance to talk to some residents and hear their concerns. I appreciate the way your officers handled the situations. One of the situations refers to something the council member Rocha said is the need for our crisis unit to expand because there was, there was a situation, I'm not going to go into detail, but you know, the officers have to fill many roles. And you know, I, I can't imagine the mental strain on them, so I'm, I'm also in support of bringing, I forgot the name, but there was a gentleman in Gilroy who also gave a presentation on mental health support. I'll follow up with you, Chief, on that. But I also heard some great ideas on how to better support officers to make sure that they're serving our community in a more efficient way from, from some of the officers. And I'll be sharing those with both the chief and the city manager. I also had somebody reach out to me and ask if our meeting minutes can be posted to the website in the Meeting Minutes tab. So I like posting information, so city clerk or a city manager, if we could look into that. I also had a resident, Joel, send me some information for Flock cameras. And it's a neighborhood, or maybe it's a, a city camera system. We already use Flock and so maybe we can look into that, I'll pass that on. I also spoke to a resident and business owner, Sophia, and asked, we listen to public comment, but do we respond or do, or are we responsive to them? People come, they don't just want to be heard, they're not here just to talk for talking sake. I think we need to move into a direction where, of course, it's voluntary, people leave their information so we can actually follow up with their concerns. You know, sometimes we have city staff, and Elise has been great when people come and raise concerns, but if we have the staff that could be responsive either at the moment or follow up with them so we could get them some follow up. I don't want them just I don't want them just to be heard, we need to be responsive. I also want to commend Robin Lee and Sustainable Salinas for all their hard work in the Santa Rita area. I also want to thank Ms. Bennett for her constant work in reviewing different contracts and providing feedback. Also, Peter from Cherokee for his constant advocacy and feedback for our infrastructure Please bear with me one moment. And as we look to the future, we cannot fix our potholes in the city of Salinas. We've been, oh, I see the gavel. But Patty didn't start the timer today, so I didn't hear it. No, I think we, as we look for the future and we're looking at our budget process, we need to look at some innovative technology, otherwise, we're not going to fix the potholes. We can't do the same old, same old thing, and our staff is working hard with the tools they have, and just like we just approved some changes to our positions, we need to approve some technology to fix the potholes. I saw Glenn Church's post about their new hot mix machine, so all that kind of stuff. Also, there's one more thing I'm going to say. Obviously, we're facing staff retention challenges, and we've talked about different solutions. I did see a post from Mr. Dayton about an audit that, an audit report that was done, I believe it was in Berkeley, but it was called Staff Retention Challenges and Delayed Hiring Audit Report to the City Council. It covered all kinds of different recommendations as far, that included things like work climate, possible telework policy, all kinds of different things, and I think it would be beneficial to our city to really dive deep and not just try to do little solutions to our citywide incentives or citywide hiring, but we need an in-depth analysis. I don't know, I know Tony doesn't like reports, because they often sit on the shelf, but I'm committed to reports, and we see that we're going to enact action, so do I, I don't know if I have any support for, you know, I request it a lot, but to possibly look at a Staff Retention Challenges Audit Report, so we can see how we can do better hiring. Is anybody interested in supporting that?
I'll support you on that.
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember Rocha.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Sandoval.
Four more items. No, I'm just kidding. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Councilmember Rocha, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to just maintain all of my comments on one item, because it's kind of, well, because it's very important. I attended the Monterey Water Board of Directors' meeting, and at the meeting, we were discussing the opt-out program, and originally, I think the intent was one with good intent, to provide consumers an option to not be able to, to have options, not transition from paying essentially what would have been ninety-eight dollars every other month to jump up to being over five hundred dollars a year on their property tax roll. But as the program was fully fleshed out and realized, the board was presented with a potential opt-out program that would essentially not be an opt-out program, because you can't really opt out of this program. You could just choose to delay the timeframe in which you would have to eventually opt into the program. And so, it would allow residents to, quote, "opt out" by paying either an eighty-seven-dollar fee, that was one of the options presented, if that's how, because the program was going to cost over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to administer on an annual basis, so you would have to pay eighty-seven dollars to opt out. Or if the agency chose to fund the program internally, due to certain state laws, you cannot subsidize one consumer for another when it comes to water bill rates, so essentially, in order to fund this program, they would have to take it out of the reserves of the customer assistance program. And that program goes to pay for low-income consumers' water bills that cannot afford to pay their water bills. So, the board is presented with two options: charge someone an eighty-seven-dollar fee to opt out, opt-in to opt out, which really wasn't an opt-out program, because you'd have to opt back in in two years, or take the money from the customer assistance program. What I don't think people realized when they pursued this opt-out program was that the county allows you to pay your property taxes on a monthly basis through the Easy Smart Pay Program. And if you do ACH, essentially, like I guess, your bank account, right, it would be no cost. If you were to do credit card on a monthly basis, it would be a 1.99% charge. That is dramatically less than the eighty-seven-dollar fee that was going to be levied on consumers to opt out, which is not really an opt-out, and this would, in theory, potentially reduce their costs, because they would go to a monthly bill instead of every other month. Essentially, it doesn't reduce your costs, it just reduces how much you're paying at one time, because it's on a monthly basis opposed to every other month, and it breaks down the bill further. So, given that reality, I felt it was not, I didn't feel it was transparent to charge someone eighty-seven dollars to opt out, essentially to create a bureaucratic redundancy program that would do nothing for them, and I did not agree with taking out of the community assistance program, because that really needs to go towards low-income consumers who cannot pay their water bill. So, we opted not to pursue the opt-out program, and instead, we're going to engage on a robust public education campaign to make sure everyone knows they can move with the Easy Smart Pay and have their property tax bill be broken down on a monthly basis. And we felt that was in the best interest of consumers and allow for the agency to work on more pertinent issues like the weighted vote discussion. So, just want to report out on that.
Thank you, Councilmember Rocha. And for me, I just wanted to start by thanking city staff, city attorney, city manager, and our clerks. I obviously don't have a lot of experience running a meeting, so I just want to thank everybody for their assistance in being able to help me through that. Also, thanks to my colleagues for not making fun of me too much while I'm up here. The mayor makes it look easy, so I appreciate her for that. Appreciate the mayor being able to conduct these meetings. Glad to step in in my role. Also, apologies for the period of the song Frozen going off on my cellphone. I was looking up the details to the Ariel Theater performances that I would like to invite everybody to. Frozen Junior will be held at the Ariel Theater, March eighth and ninth, and then be back again for the fourteenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth. So, if there's anybody that would like to go out to those performances, I just wanted to go ahead and make a plug for that. Also, wanted to highlight the community cleanup on Saturday, March sixteenth, from nine a.m. to eleven a.m. at Caesar Chavez Park. Everybody's invited, so that we could do some community service out at that park. A lot of really good stuff happening there. Thank you to Councilmember Rocha for attending the Harmony At Home Bullying Prevention Campaign. It's really great to be able to see where it started from and where it is now. Also, thank you to city staff that was there in attendance, also being able to capture the moments there, but it's important. Nobody should have to be bullied, and nobody should be in this fight alone. It happens even to all of us. So, just really wanted to say thank you to Harmony At Home for continuing the great work that they do there. Also, thank you to Ms. Sanders for the big, from the Big Sur Land Trust, from giving us an update on what's to come. Very excited, and I know that this council has been very supportive of that park, so just thank you for coming in. If anybody likes cars and wants to be at the Street Low Car Show, I know it was postponed from last Sunday, but it will be happening this Sunday from twelve p.m. to five p.m. at the Rodeo, District Four. So, if you guys have a chance to go out there, it should be a really great time. Also, just wanted to, you know, in my councilmember comments, just give a little bit of a shout out to my wife, and just say thank you for everything that she does for our family. Over the weekend, we got a chance to be able to announce the baby that she has in her tummy, and Olivia is ecstatic, because she knows it's going to be a little sister now, so just wanted to give, thank you. Thanks. I just wanted to give her a shout out in my councilmember comments. But on more of a serious note, I wanted to take some time, and I just want to thank all of my colleagues for reaching out to me before today's meeting and during today's meeting, about the importance of talking about the tragedy that happened in King City. I just wanted to read a little bit of a statement that I have here. Alicia Ramirez, Aparicio, thirty-two years old, of King City, who was celebrating her birthday over the weekend. She was also an employee of Me Memorial Hospital, where she was taken after the shooting and died from her injuries. Mario Guzman Mendoza, forty-two, of King City. Francisco Perez, thirty-two, of King City. And Olivo Perez Piña, thirty-two, of King City. And I know that there are other victims that are suffering, some of them not life-threatening injuries, but some that are. And I just wanted to say that, you know, as somebody that has born and raised in Salinas, but also a part of the Monterey County, there's no space for these types of horrific tragedies and this violence that happens within our community. So, just wanted to show our support to King City, show support to the families that are having to go through this tough time, and I wanted to know if it's okay if we can close tonight's meeting with a moment of silence for these folks that have lost their lives. I know that we're going to be talking about closed-session items here, some existing litigations and public employee appointments, so we're going to be talking about that in closed session, but I did want to end today's meeting and have a moment of silence for those folks. Is there any public comment for those closed-session items? Okay, seeing none, then I will go ahead and adjourn today's meeting in memory of those in the King City community. Okay, this meeting is adjourned.